For all their hard work and effort, putting all these budget books together and everything that goes along with it, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Also, thank you for preparing our snacks for today.
Wow.
So at this time, we will start the 2018 budget hearings. Mr. Reuter, our financial consultant, you're up first.
Good morning.
Morning.
I believe you all have a memo that summarizes some of my comments, but I'd like to walk you through a little background because the cuts might seem a little bigger this year than other years, and there are some revenue reasons for that that I'd like to touch on. And I'm actually going to start in the fiscal plan on page forty-four. So the big document you have there, if you would, go to page forty-four. Just to recap, Hampton County has a one percent local option income tax in place, and that is collected countywide and then distributed among the units based on their property tax levies and prior year distributions. But what I want to focus on is that column that says certified distributions, and I've bolded it off the page to, so you could see it, is the one hundred and fifty-six million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand. That is only up two percent countywide, and that number reflects, is supposed to reflect the collections from July one, two thousand and seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. And I'm a bit surprised by that. We had received a preliminary number in June from the Department of Revenue, and they were actually only estimating two months, two more months of collections, which would have been May and June. And at that time, they were, they had shared a number of one hundred and sixty-one million to one hundred and sixty-two million dollars countywide. And to be real frank, that would have still been even a little low considering the economy to me, but that's something I could have probably went, all right, that's probably within the acceptable range. But when you look at the prior years, you know, just last year is seven point three, and the year before ten point nine, and four point eight, five point one, ten point four. So our history has been much stronger than what's reflected in that number. And so I can't sit here and stand before you today and say that there's an error, because I don't know that there's an error, but I am going to meet with the Department of Revenue this Friday and have a conversation about what happened in those last two months that would have caused such a swing for that to only be two percent. It just doesn't, it doesn't, it's not consistent, I guess, with everything else that we're seeing, you know, in the economy, and so.
Is the person, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mike, is the person that you will be having a meeting with somebody that you have had a meeting with before?
No, but this is actually the commissioner of the Department of Revenue, so I have the, I have their ear on this one, so I'll have to report back my findings once I have a meeting with them. But we've spoken to them and asked them to provide us some month-by-month collections comparing the prior year, meaning the prior year of July one, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth of seventeen. Can we see month by month what happened in that year and compare it to what happened in seventeen, eighteen, and is it a timing issue? You know, do we have something that just didn't make the cutoff? Now, this all gets reconciled later, and this is the puzzling part to me. So we get this certification based on a fiscal year, whatever's been collected in that fiscal year twelve-month cycle. But then eventually, we get the calendar year numbers. And so if you look on the far left side there where it says collections, and the last known year is two thousand and sixteen, it was up six point two-two, the year before seven point eight, the year before eight point five, and the year two, the year two thousand and thirteen, two point three. Ignore thirteen, that's some, something happened in Indiana, it's statewide, and I have some federal data that supports that, that lower increase. But if I use very, very, very conservative numbers even going forward in seventeen, one point six-one, and then just two percent for the next two years, we would be well above that, that one hundred and fifty-six million dollars. And so this will eventually get reconciled on a calendar year, and in fact, I'm actually estimating that you're going to get another special distribution this next year. I just don't know what that will be again, you know, here we are.
Did you put the twelve point eight in as a placeholder then?
I have, and I'm going to talk about that in greater detail.
Well, you know, Mike, you've got gray hair just like me, but we've heard this song before. Your COET numbers aren't right.
Right, right.
I'm not blaming you.
No, I understand, yeah, I understand.
Ah, dang.
So I, I can't, so my point being is your cuts are going to look a little deeper, because I have nothing more to share with you today than that, it's going up two percent, and it might take a while to peel that onion back again to see what really happened. And so that's one of your largest sources of revenue, and it's only going up two percent in a county that's growing, that's not, that's hard to keep up with. Now, I am anticipating, Jeff, a special distribution, even with those conservative assumptions, in two thousand and nineteen, but we won't know that again like this year, we won't know that until March, excuse me, May one of nineteen. And I'm going to focus on that a little bit better when we talk about revenues over expenditures, because my memo looks a little different this year than it has in previous years because of how we've been instructed to deposit any kind of special distributions.
January, would we, would we know what the certified distributions will be for sure?
Well, it is certified right now for two thousand and nineteen at that one hundred and fifty-six million.
So they won't make any other adjustments until May one?
Right, for any special.
At the latest.
For special distributions unless it's determined that there was an issue of what they reported.
Okay.
Now, one thing that I see as a positive, and it may not be a positive in the sense that we're all paying for this, but if you look on that line, two thousand and seventeen, and look under special distributions, and you see the number seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, the state has taken a half percent out of everyone's collections to set aside for a new computer system. And so I know it's painful to pay for that, but every county and every, every entity will essentially pay for a part of a new system, which I think in the long run will be better because we've been on this somewhat of a roller coaster over the last twenty-five years, and so hopefully they can modernize their technology a little bit better to account for these dollars. So I don't know what I'm going to hear here on Friday, but today I can only tell you what I know, and that is that local option income tax countywide is only going to be up two percent from the distribution of the prior year.
And I take it that seven fourteen, that's a percentage, they took a percentage for every county?
It's a half percent.
Half percent from every county?
It's half percent of the collections of that year from every, everyone that has local option income tax. So that has been deducted out of everyone's accounts, that was statutory.
They told you when that computer will be operational, be up?
Maybe I'll hear something Friday, I'm not, okay, I'm not sure. But, but they've been working on some sort of analysis for our meeting on Friday, so I'm anxious to have that meeting.
You're saying that the twelve point eight, though, I mean, that's, that's, that's still a conservative number, though, right?
I think it's, my gut said, so Fred, I've, my gut says this is conservative, this has been my most volatile revenue over my last twenty-five years of trying to project because of all these things that have happened with local option income tax over the years. From all indications, that would be a conservative number, and it might be much higher than that.
Okay.
And so I'm using a very conservative number to even get that, and that's one point six-one percent increase in the next year. So in other words, collections in two thousand and seventeen would only have to increase the final number, one point six-one percent, to get to that twelve point eight million dollar surplus.
Okay.
So I'm going to show you how that's built into your finances going forward, and then it will be up to you to decide whether you want to build that in as part of your two thousand and nineteen budget process, or you want to continue to exclude that.
The twelve point eight?
Right, well, now, that's not your portion, that's countywide.
Okay, but I mean, our portion of that twelve point eight.
So your portion of this total distribution is twenty-six point six percent. So that's how much the county did.
How much?
Twenty-six point six percent.
Lower for some reason now. They're getting lower?
It did, but it's stabilized now, so it didn't go down. It had been lowering, at one time we were over thirty percent, but as the other units grew, their levies were growing faster, and the county was receiving a smaller portion of that. So the reason this is important, because, you know, you're going to be trying to balance a two thousand and nineteen budget, but your, one of your second largest sources of revenue is only, is not up a lot. So two percent in a flat county, you know, where you're not growing, you know, that, you could probably make do with that, but that's going to be, it's going to pinch things a little tighter than what it has in the past. So the next thing I'd like to talk about is property tax, because it came in a little lower.
Do you have any good news to you have, or?
I do have a little good news, I'll get to the good news here in a minute, I'll just start with the bad and build up. So on page thirty-one, this is what's called the six-year non-farm personal income factor, and this is a statewide factor in the Department of Revenue, the Indiana Department of Revenue does not certify this information, this is certified actually at the federal level. And so I was originally forecasting a drop from last year, but our property tax levy, it's bolded off the page here, is going to increase one point zero three four, in other words, three point four percent increase in the property tax levy in next year, meaning nineteen. So we have a maximum levy, we have a maximum amount of property taxes that we can, we can levy and operate off on, and that is going up three point four percent. Now, again, that is a statewide factor that does not necessarily represent what's going on in Indiana, in Hampton County, but that factor's applied to everyone, no matter where you live, I always use Argus as the example, so if you're living in Argus, Indiana, your levies are going up three point four percent, but if you're living in Hampton County, your levies are going up three point four percent, doesn't seem quite right. There's an appeal opportunity, I think, coming up for us next year because we will exceed a certain factor to qualify for. But this year, we don't yet. And so, so the point being is your local option income tax is increasing two percent, your property taxes are increasing three point four percent, that's not a lot of revenue growth in an economy that's booming. And so that's going to, that's going to pinch on the expenditure side of the equation. So it's not awful news, we've seen worse, you know, we've seen decreases in collections, but nevertheless, it's not, the property tax piece is just a little lower than what I anticipated, I was forecasting three point seven, it came at three point four. But the income tax, I was anticipating that we would get some better news there, because that is to reflect what's happening in Hampton County. So any questions about those two before I move on? Okay, now, I do have some good news, Fred, so if you turn to page thirty, the page right before that, the assess valuation has been certified for the county, and in two thousand and nineteen, it was certified up six point one two percent. That's the strongest increase we've seen in ten-plus years. And so the reason that is good is because that helps manage our tax rate. We've actually been using some CCD dollars to buy down some of the debt rates to manage the flat tax rate, and by this assess valuation coming in higher, we have to use fewer, fewer of those dollars to do that now. So I'll get to that and show you exact numbers, what that looks like now. We advertised high and built into the CCD budget three million dollars, I'll point all those numbers out to you as we go along, but this is some encouraging news.
Yeah. Just a quick, you're not, you may not be able to answer this, I mean, this might be a real estate professional, but, you know, you got a six percent increase, how close is that to the market increases that we see in the county now?
Well, I mean.
I mean, because they don't go based on the market, it's a different thing.
Right, we are on a market value system now, and we go through a trending process that the assessors go through, and they trend neighborhoods up and down, and down now, I mean, they can go down as well. But between trending and growth, we spent some time talking to the assessors about this before this was certified to make sure we weren't over-certifying, and they felt pretty comfortable that it wasn't just all trending, that, you know, some of this is new construction as well that's happening. So, so it is to reflect what's happening in the market. If you go back, Fred, and look at, back in two thousand and thirteen, we were actually seeing decreases, well, that was the effects of negative trending that was happening as a result of the two thousand and eight, nine recession, and it just took that long for them to get into our property tax values where they started to decline. Now, we're starting to see the reverse, where we're seeing positive trending and the assess valuation.
I pull these numbers a lot, I never seen an actual county assessment that close to what, we're pulling for comps on a, on a house or anything else, it's not, it's usually not that close, so, I mean, I didn't know they did it that way, so that's good information.
So we are on a market value system, and so we're supposed to be as close to market value as possible, not exact, did you get me wrong? It's different than the old days where we used to have reassessments, it was six years between reassessments before we'd have another reassessment, then we went to four years, and now we went to market value and trending, you know, we're supposed to trend and reflect the neighborhood values. So with that said, kind of highlighting those big picture items, I'm actually going to start on page nine on the finances, because you need to understand how this, how the fiscal plan is structured, and this is what we call the old highway COET fund. By the way, just from a terminology standpoint, COET no longer exists, it's now called lit, it used to be called county option income tax, now it's called local option income tax. They've, they've put this umbrella over all the different local option income taxes out there, and they call them all lit now. And so if you hear me say lit, which is a twenty, thirty-year habit, because it's been that way for years, it's the same as lit, or vice versa, lit is COET, I mean, it didn't change how it was collected, it didn't change your rate.
You changed the name, they still can't find our damn money.
Yeah. Maybe that's the speaker, I changed the name.
Changed the name, and we'll save off a few points. What page did you say you were on?
I'm on page nine, and the reason I'm taking you here is because this is the, what we called the highway COET fund.
What's it called now?
Well, it technically should be called the highway lit fund.
Okay.
But we, I just stayed with COET on this one because that's what the name of it is actually in our system. And so in this particular case, the highway department has requested five million, two twenty-eight, three twenty-three, that's their budget request. Now, I'm not saying you'll do this, but if you were to approve that number, if you were to approve that budget request, it would take five million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars of the certified, of those lit dollars away from the general fund. So we collect, we collect lit as a whole, but as we've done in the past, we've allocated so much of those lit dollars back to the highway department. Last year, last year you gave them three million dollars. So my point being is as you try to balance the budget, this is part of that equation, so think of this highway COET fund no differently than if it were a department sitting in your general fund, because it's pulling from the same revenue source. Does that make sense? So if you, if you lower the budget, I'm not saying you're going to, if you lower this budget, you're putting more dollars back into your general fund to help balance it. But if you keep it at this level, just know that it would then take five million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars of that total lit distribution.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
But at the bottom, the ending cash balance is the exact same from two thousand and eighteen.
Right.
Is that because you're taking more out of COET?
So basically, what I do, so you know where you are, whether you're in or out of balance, is I put enough COET lit in there to balance that budget.
And that, yes, that's why you went from three million to five.
Exactly.
And that, yes, that's why you went from $3 million to $5.2 roughly.
Exactly. So when you're looking at the general fund, when we get back to the general fund in a moment, you'll see, well, if we do this in Highway COAT to balance the budget, then that's going to leave us short in the general fund.
Gotcha.
So just think of this as if it were a department in your general fund.
Okay. Mike, Don, maybe you can come with this. Okay, the Highway's budget request for '18 was 3.5 million. What did we actually give them by the time we got to the end of the year?
Right now it's $3 million is what we...
Give them additionals as the year went on?
Oh, there would have been, oh, you're saying, what was the original budget of?
Yeah. Okay, so their budget was, their budget was 3.5, but by the time we got to the end of the year, they'd spent 11.
So they encumbered a large portion. So if you look at the bottom of '18, there was almost $5.4 million encumbered.
Right. Which is $2 million more than their budget.
I can't, I can't respond to the encumbrance. I can only tell you that that's that appropriation. So you carried $11 million forward, almost $12 million forward, but 5.4 million of it was encumbered.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So...
Doesn't answer my question.
So that's the reason the cash, but your question is what was the original budget of '18 and how many additionals? The additionals are listed back here about how...
Yeah, no, but it's not on this sheet. So you asked for three and who knows what you got by the end of the year.
So they have cash to appropriate that's not in the budget?
Yeah.
Or not encumbered. Now, whether they have plans for it, they might have plans for that. I just don't know.
I'm with you.
I can only go by what's been encumbered or appropriated to date, and that's what's reflected on this page. No, that's okay, but this is important to know because it affects the general fund. Okay, so now I'm going to go back to the general fund, page one. So as I've shared with you in the past, the most important line is that far left, on the far left where you see excess deficit revenues over expenditures. And that tells you whether your budget's in or out of balance. And so here's where I want to go back to that special distribution. So when we got this year's special distribution, there was a change where they directed us to deposit that. All prior special distributions, we were directed to deposit into the rainy day account. This year, we got notification of the special distribution in March. There was some confusion. The State Board of Accounts came out with a directive and said you shall deposit the money, based on how they interpret the code, into the fund in which you're depositing your local option income tax dollars. In your case, it's the general fund. So that money, instead of going into the rainy day fund, now is being directed into the general fund. Well, that adds to some confusion because now suddenly that, those are special one-time distributions. And there'll be a day where that goes away. And so it's not necessarily a consistent source of revenue. Right now, it's kind of consistent because we see those special distributions. We're in a bad economy. It won't take long for special distributions to dry up pretty quickly. But I, so in the revenues there, you see a new revenue. So if you go to the far left on the revenues, you'll see a LIT regular and a LIT special. And I've highlighted the LIT special off the page. So in 19, of that $18 million that I was forecasting, the county would receive about 3.4. That would normally have gone into your rainy day fund. But now it's going into your general fund and skewing things just a little bit. Because when you go down to that most important line, down three quarters down, you see the $7.4 million, the negative $7.4 million. That accounts for that revenue being deposited there. In other words, there's $3.4 million showing up in your revenue stream now that's helping balance that budget. If you were to pluck that out, which is the assumption I had made...
Then you'd be at 10.8?
Yes. So when you look at your memo this year, that the front page that I provided you, you'll hear my comments that you're out of balance $7.4 million in 19. However, there's the anticipated special distribution of $3.4 million. But if you took that out and kept, and did not want to include that in your revenue stream and you wanted to continue to move that out to rainy day, you're really out of balance $10 million. $10,842. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that is a significant change from previous years. Now, looking at, remember, the Highway LIT thing is where we started. So whatever you do with Highway LIT, if you, the LIT regular would go up here if you cut Highway, the Highway COAT. So that would help balance this. Real quick, Mike, I want to make sure I'm tracking apples to apples. You said in past years, it was different. And 2018 budget, is it set up the same? So 2018, we're down here at 3.5. Does that include the $6 million? It does. In revenue? Okay. So we're looking apples to apples? Yes. Good enough. And that was, that was actually a change I did not anticipate. I originally built it into the rainy day fund. And if you look at the bottom of this page, you see that negative number being pulled back out. That's that special distribution being pulled back out, assuming that you're going to want to move that back to rainy day. Not saying if you don't do that, that's fine, but that's just the assumption I made to be consistent with prior years.
If we did this directive and put our special distribution into county general, does that not co-mingle with property tax and taint that for revenues?
Yes, but you can redirect your regular distribution. You could change your allocation of regular distribution at any time before whatever.
They have...
We have a way to do that without getting it into the general fund. Yeah, so really what you're doing is you're being directed to deposit these special distributions into your operating fund. But you're actually using a different statute now to get it out. You're using the rainy day statute to get it out of your general fund, back into a rainy day fund. So that's a different statute, actually.
Why would we pay you, isn't it?
Track that stuff, yeah, right. To try to stay out of all that. Alright. So now, looking at some of the expenses, when you get into the expenses, our personnel budget's up pretty significantly. When you look at, when you look at the in-person base pay line item from 2018 to 2019, you know, we're up almost 10% in that personnel item. So going back to my revenue comment. 2% increase in local option income tax. 3.4% increase in your property tax. Your revenues aren't increasing 10%. And these are fixed costs. Just, you know, maybe you'll end up doing these. I'm not saying right or wrong. But just know that these are fixed costs once you build them in and they don't go away. And your revenue's increasing somewhere around that 3% mark in total. Maybe a little less than that when you average those two. So just be cautious about the fixed costs that are going into future distributions because those don't go away. Now, health insurance is a very reasonable increase. We've done well in this year, so we didn't, that budget didn't increase. But the retirement contribution actually jumped pretty significantly there too. And I'm not, I don't, I don't have the story behind that. But, but the, when we look at what we have appropriated this year and what's appropriated next year is a pretty significant increase. But then on the capital side, in the 2019, we have about $7.6 million there in capital. That's kind of the easy, in my opinion, kind of the easier target. Because you could pluck that out pretty quickly and place that into other things. You could either place it, some of it you could probably place into CCD, which I'm going to talk about because that's where the...
Of the $7.55...
Is parked in the general fund. So when I'm saying you're out of balance $7.44, if you just took all the capital out, you'd be in balance. Now you still have that special distribution built in there. So I'm just trying to highlight some things you want to think about, maybe as you're trying to formulate 2019 budget. So there are some opportunities. I don't want to make it sound like all gloom and doom because there are some ways you could restructure this and get this thing back in balance without, you know, a lot of heavy cutting. But I just wanted you to focus.
So no new bodies, no capital, we're in budget.
You're in budget, you're in budget. So now, capital can be placed other places. It's the fixed cost, the personnel cost, that doesn't always fit somewhere else. You can't move personnel cost to CCD.
Right, yeah.
But you can move some of the capital cost to CCD. And I'm going to show you why you can do that now because the assess valuation came in higher. Now suddenly, we don't need $3 million to buy the debt down. Now suddenly, we need $725,000. So you have some places you could go with that, with that capital. Now, one last comment on the general fund. I'm going to move through some of the other pages a little more quickly. I know you got another one starting at 8:45. I've always suggested, this is not a written policy, but I've always suggested that you try to maintain 50% of your next year's property tax collections in this fund. And so if you were to prove things as is, if you were to say, hey, we're just going to prove everything is, you'd be at $12.4 million. And so you would be, so at the bottom of 19, $12.4 million is where you would be in cash.
Okay, yeah.
So your next year's property tax collections are $38 million and some change. So you'd really want to be a little better than $19 million in cash. Your goal to be at $19 million in cash at the end of 2019. We're still okay in '18 at the $23 million that I'm estimating there. But in 19, like I said, if you were to approve the budget as is, and by the way, you could technically approve the budget as is because you've got the cash to do it. It's just what, how, what you want those future years to look like. Okay, so flip to page three. The rest of these I'm going to go through pretty quickly. And this isn't a huge issue, but I just want to put it on your radar. The reassessment fund has been spending, and this is no one's fault. The state establishes the levy on this fund. But when you look at that most important line, excess deficit revenues over expenditures, you will see the last four years, we've been spending more than we've been taking in. And in the 2019 budget is no different.
That's a small number though, I mean...
It really is a small number, but the reason it's important is that we can't continue this. Eventually, this has to be moved to the general fund, or we have to increase the levy of this fund, in this fund. And this is set by the state. We'd have to ask them to increase it to get it back in balance. But this levy is part of that maximum levy. So if we increase here, it has to come from the general fund.
Well, it really don't matter if we take expenses for reassessment out of the general fund.
Yeah, it's, think of the reassessment fund and the general fund almost the same. Because if we were to increase the levy here, there's less levy in the general fund. Or if you move some of this expense back to the general fund. It's not a huge number, but I want it on your radar because at some point, we're going to have to move some of this expense back to the general fund or we're going to have to increase the levy. I'm not saying we have to do it in '18, but it kind of adds to that deficit number because at some point, we're going to have to deal with that. Kind of a minor number. Page four is the debt fund. And if you look under revenue, you'll see the title miscellaneous CCD supplement. And we have been supplementing this fund with CCD dollars to manage a flat tax rate. And this year, we ended up $2.6 million. But next year, because of the tax rate being, because the assess valuation's so much higher, that's generating more dollars, which lessens the amount then that we're going to have to put into the debt fund to get this fund to balance. So we advertised $3 million. And, and as I mentioned, you have $7.4 million of capital. You could move a couple million dollars into this fund because we got $3 million that we had advertised. So you got a couple million there. You could move that right away and not change even what we advertised. So we advertised $3 million. We only really need $7.25.
Okay, we could move how much out of which fund?
Well, the general fund, we have, we have $7 million of capital sitting. You might think, where can I park that in other funds? Well, probably, depending on the expense, probably the majority of the expenses that are, you're talking about that are capital in nature, most of them probably could be parked in the CCD fund.
You're talking about two and a quarter million?
Yes, but you actually have cash beyond that, that I'm going to show you in the CCD fund. I just wanted to point this out that we're not going to have to put as much money, because assess valuation came in. I'm going to talk about CCD in a minute. But I wanted to point this out because our assess valuation came in higher, it's calling for less dollars out of our CCD fund. I'm going to show you CCD fund here in a moment.
So CCD is where there will be excess cash available?
And even more so than two and a quarter is what you're going to show?
Yes.
Okay.
But my point is that we advertised to protect this. We didn't know the assess valuation when we advertised this. And so this, that, going back, Fred, that's some good news. I'm trying to find some good news there for you.
You're a bad news source guy.
That's right. Well, page five, this is not a lot, but this is the cumulative courthouse fund. And it is actually in balance by $148,000. Now I'll tell you, this fund, we used to always have to restrict this levy, had to maintain what they call the local effort. We always had to maintain a certain amount and you always had to pass a resolution to maintain that. That's no longer the case, to be honest. You could eliminate this fund now and move these expenses to your general fund. But my point being is we could probably lower the levy on this one by $148,000. So it's $150,000 that could go back to the general fund. So think of the cumulative courthouse fund as a department in your general fund. That's new, relatively new. Okay, so there's, of the deficit, you know, when you're looking at the $7.4 million deficit, here's $150,000. That may not sound like a lot, but you do enough $150,000, you can get there.
It takes, it takes a hell of a lot of...
It takes a lot of them, but you, but every, every $150,000 adds up.
Let me ask you, Mike, what would be a negative of doing that, taking it to the general fund?
Well, we've advertised it this way this year. Now next year, we could have a conversation 2020. We could, we could go ahead and just move it. Now you could do it this year, but you'd have to do it by additional appropriation and approve these expenses in January. But the reason I'm pointing it out to you is because we could now lower this levy where we couldn't lower it before. And so it always, we always had to kind of move some expense over here. Now think of the cumulative courthouse fund as being part of your general fund.
And if we did that in 2020, then we'd just zero this out?
You could zero this out.
Okay.
You could skip page six, convention tourism, rainy day fund, page seven. Where you saw revenue numbers coming in here before. Now you're seeing transfers coming in. That negative number I showed you on the general fund is showing at the bottom of this page, showing as a transfer in. So if you did that, you know, if you continued to park that special distribution here, your cash would grow to about $9.26, about $9.2 million in 2019. Between the special distribution we got this year and the anticipated one that I anticipate for 19, you'd end with about $9.2 million here.
What fund is that?
Rainy day. If you use that strategy that you're not going to put that special distribution into the general fund and you're going to transfer it out. Page eight is the highway fund. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. My anticipated revenue is less than what the budget is, but they have cash. They have cash in this fund and this doesn't affect, this fund doesn't affect the general fund in any way. So if you agree with the expenses, they have enough cash and would be left with enough cash for any current, any concerns of cash flow. So no concerns with the highway fund. Page nine, we've already covered. Page 10 is local roads and streets, a little bit of a similar story to the highway fund. My revenue, I'm not anticipating as high as what their expenses are, not by a huge amount. They're still left with $1.1 million in the local roads and streets fund. And that's more than sufficient cash for any cash flow concerns. So you could approve this budget as is, even though it's out of balance. You could approve it as is because there's enough cash in this fund to cash flow.
Now, did I miss something? Where was the $2 million? I thought you were going to tell us in CCD. Oh, we haven't got there yet.
We haven't got there yet.
CCD is different than Cume courthouse.
Okay. I know it's a little confusing this year. There's been some changes from last year, so I want to spend a little more time this year. Major bridge, you can approve that. Health fund, page 13, not, not a lot to comment here. We do have more than sufficient cash in this fund. When you look at the amount of property taxes that we collect being around, you know, $1,006, $1,007, if you had $850,000 in cash here, you would be fine. So you could technically, think of this as a department in your general fund. You could technically lower the levy here and move that cash back to the general fund. I've done that before with, in other places. And because they really don't need $1,006 sitting in the health fund, if you wanted to move that back, we could lower that levy in 2019. That's a one-time adjustment, okay? Once you move that cash, you're just really moving it from the health fund in back into the general fund. Just saying that there's a source of cash there that may look like it's sitting in another fund, but we could get it back to the general fund.
All this helping to get to that 50% balance that we talked about earlier.
So in this fund, you wouldn't probably wanna take it below 850, 850,000. Otherwise, the county auditors officers run into cash flow problems. Parking rack on page 15, this one's pretty much, we've done some additional appropriations here, and this one's really sitting, sitting on that 50% number. But think of this as a department as well in the general fund. This, this takes property tax. And so, you know, if there's something in this budget that isn't necessary, that money can be moved back to the general fund. Now, the cash balance is where it should be. The cash balance is where it should be. But my point being is, if there are expenditures in here that can be reduced, it's like putting money back into the.
What are you saying about this cash balance? You're saying we should, I mean, if anything, no matter what happens, you're saying to leave that $2,158 there?
Roughly $2 million, Fred, yeah. Roughly leave the, roughly $2 million there, based on the expend, based on the next year's property tax. But my point being is, is actually, they're asking for $4,745. That ends expense that year. Anything that can be whittled out of that, means there's less property tax that has to go in this fund, and less property tax in this fund means there's more back in the general fund. So when you're looking at the $7.4 million problem that you're trying to correct, this is part of that. Just think of it as a department, health fund, think of cumulative courthouse, health fund, and park fund, as if they're sitting in your general fund, when you're trying to, to get to $7.4 million.
Well, the two new people that they're asking for in parks are built into their, this number, isn't it?
That would be correct. If they, if they're in the budget, all I've done is, I don't know what's in their budget request.
Right, right.
All I've done is taken, I've taken all their gross budget requests, and I've put them in.
Personal services, personal services go from $1,002 to $1,005, almost $1,006. No, $1,007, that'd be budget 19.
Right, so, again, what you're seeing are gross numbers that have come in from the departments. They've not been modified in any way. I've just taken them and compared to the department request to the revenue available. You can skip page 16. Now, page 17, this is where I wanna spend a little more time, cumulative capital development So this is, this is where we had parked that $3 million into the other services and charges there. It's actually got some other things in it. That $3,892 includes $3 million to buy that debt rate down, to make sure we had no tax rate increase. That doesn't need to be $3 million, it only needs to be $725,000.
So there's $3 million available?
There's $2 million roughly.
$2,700,000.
Well, yeah, $2,275, $2,275 available. That's appropriated. But if you look right below that, you could see that the budget is actually in balance by another $1,005. So even with that $3 million, we were in balance $1,005 in CCD. And so my point being is, you could, you can move a lot of that capital expense that's being requested in the general fund to CCD. If that makes sense. Or you could park it in a future bond issue, you know, or you could just eliminate it. Whatever you do, my point is, that, the $7 million in the general fund can be replaced in different places. Unlike personnel, it's harder, harder to replace those, replace those in another fund, those fixed costs. Let's see. The rest of those, the rest of those don't need a lot of conversation. But the final comment is on page 29. Tax rate. I've, I've, I've used the assumption that we'd not increase the tax rate in 2019 again. That's the assumption we've been carrying forward. And you can see actually, going all the way back to 14, the tax rate decreased in 14, decreased in 15, decreased in 16, flat in 17, flat in 18, and I'm anticipating that you would wanna keep it flat in 2019. And the reason that's important is, you could actually take that $725,000 too, if you wanted. You have authority to go out and collect that money in the debt fund. So if you didn't wanna put that $725,000 in the, into that debt fund, you could move that back to CCD, and that would free up another $725,000, if you wanted to do that. I use that 725 to keep the flat tax rate, if that makes sense.
If we took it out, then we'd have to.
You'd have a slight rate increase.
Right, gotcha.
Are you ready for questions?
I am, ready for questions.
I called you a couple months ago, and told you about some potential problems that were facing us. The biggest, the biggest concern I have, and I'm not expecting an answer today, but the biggest concern I have is we have three major projects that were committed to from last year. Jail, which I think is ongoing and on budget, the courthouse, which is frozen in place as far as I'm concerned right now, and Highway 37. And the preliminary information that we get, which is limited, is that as of now, they're forecasting it to be $25 million over budget, and there ain't no bulldozers running yet. So my question to you then, and as is now, in the worst-case situation, and that actually materializes, where would we possibly get our half of $25 million, which would be $12 million or 12 and a half, thinking that the state will chip in no more than their 100 million they've already put in? And what combination of voodoo and, and microder magic would we use in the future to produce $12 million? Whether it would be bonding, cash, this, that, or the other thing? You got any thoughts off the top of your head?
Yeah, I do. So right now, your general fund in, in 2018 is forecasted much lower, because we still have appropriated $10,780 of that for, let me get the number here, $10,680, excuse me, for the judicial building.
Yeah, and, and I understand that, but I'm not asking you to, to.
Yeah, so it's kinda indirect though, because you can't do a property tax bond for a road.
Right.
So what we would essentially do is take those dollars, encumber them, and move those COAT dollars, or those local option income tax dollars into a fund, and then you would bond more of this. That's kind of the workaround.
That's the workaround?
That's the workaround. So if you unencumbered the $10,680 here, that would free up dollars that we could redirect in county option, local option income tax dollars, but then you would bond, you would bond more of this facility.
And, and I'm always, as, as part of the finance committee, we were always directing you to keep our rate flat, keep it flat, we have, for decades, that's what we have told you. But in the terrible situation of, think, looking at like 2014, our rate was .035, and now we're at, at 19, we're .281. What would we generate to go back to 3, .305? What if we, what if we pushed our rate back up to that?
How much would that generate?
Yeah.
Give me a second.
I'm not advocating that, I'm asking.
Do you mind if I just report that back?
Yeah, we'll be here for hours and days.
You wanna know if you were going back to the rate of 2013, or 2014?
Yeah, 13, 14, something like that. That's like the.
So the rate being today, .2814, if we went back to the .3054, how much would we generate in property tax?
That would be 2014. Do you want 2013?
It didn't matter.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all pretty close, roughly the same.
Is it anything, and, and like you said, though, even by, we can't use that for roads, right? Property tax.
Right, you gotta be.
But you'd do the workaround again.
Yes.
Okay. What, what is that possibility? What, what would that generate? And you can.
I'll, I'll text Robin or Don here.
Okay, that's all I had.
I know it's a little more confusing this year, because of that special distribution, how it's playing into the, to the operating fund this year, but again, just keep in mind our revenues, you would think in this economy that they would have come in pretty strong, but it is not, it was a surprise to me. It just, it isn't consistent with what you would think would be.
That doesn't paint a good picture though, right? I mean, if, if they're not growing during, you know, booming economy, what are we headed for, you know?
No, I mean, yeah, I understand. That's one way to look at it, Fred, but that's old timers. The numbers ain't right. The numbers ain't right, the numbers ain't right. We've been through this before. You know, Mike is conservative on his growth figure, and when they come in, wow, you didn't make that. That ain't 'cause we didn't grow, it's 'cause they didn't get the numbers right. Been through litigation, we did everything.
Still go by the numbers that are put in front of you.
Yes, absolutely, that's what we gotta budget on.
Yeah, exactly.
I would like to emphasize, emphasize the department revenue as being very cooperative and working with me on.
Really?
This.
What, cooperate doesn't?
So this is a different agency than I normally work with. So this is, this is the starting point. So what happens is, local option income tax is collected by the department revenue, then it's given to the state budget agencies, and then ultimately to the Department of Local Government Finance. I'm going to the Department of Revenue. In the past, we, we met with the budget agency. So I'm going more to the source, and they are being cooperative in, in helping me get, get information. So I'd like to emphasize, that's, that is a difference than what I've experienced in prior years.
Mike, years ago, when we were back in the litigation days, you had looked at like Duke Energy, and reviewed those numbers, and you knew then that we were way, way out of whack. Have you reviewed all that?
I have not.
Cause that was a big indicator.
Yeah, so this, this takes a while to start peeling the onion back, if, to try and really pinpoint that. I wasn't anticipating that because of what I saw in June.
Sure.
You know, what I saw in June, I didn't think that we were going to have to really kinda dive back into.
So you're gonna wait until after your meeting before you start that process?
Before I make any comments, I wanna hear what, what their, what their findings are. And maybe it's a timing issue. Maybe it's just a, maybe there's a timing issue where one month just got posted, more of it got posted in July, and maybe it's going to come back then in 2020. I don't know, cause I just haven't seen that data yet. They've been working on that for me. And again, I wanna emphasize, they've been very cooperative in, in helping me.
Can you say that they actually, the State Department of Revenue, do they today, do they this year actually isolate Hamilton County's?
They do not. We're still, we are still, and that's where I'm hopeful with the new computer system, that money that we actually can get to systems. Right now, when we had the last issue at the Department of Revenue, the legislators hired Devois Touche to come in and evaluate the processes of the Department of Revenue. And, and they were antiquated, and that was what they were identifying, and so the, the modernization of those systems is what they're trying to do. And, and I hope that we get back to that, because it's still, in today's technology, it seems like a pretty easy thing, that when someone reports a Hamilton County income tax, that would go into Hamilton County's fund. Right now, we are.
That is not the case today.
That is not the case today, because we're still backing into it, we're waiting till all the collections have been processed. That's why we, the last known year is 2016. The last known year of collections, that may sound crazy, but if you think about it, was this April 15th issue that we filed our 2017 returns, then you had people that filed for extensions. So they're still trying to sort out 2017. And that's the system, that's when we know when we're gonna get special distributions, when they finally certify that final collection number for the calendar year. And so I don't know that yet. Typically, I don't even know that till March, when, what that number is, so.
But as a follow-up to Brad's question, at some point, is there a, is there a true concerted effort to distribute, distribute exactly what Hamilton County?
Yeah, with the exception that they can maintain a 15% cash balance, 15, and that's not a lot. We've, I would tell you, years ago, we were at 50%, then we went to 25%, then we went back to 50%, and now we're at 15%. Remember, remember when they, they were looking for highway dollars? They sent you a big special distribution and said, you have to park 75% of these into this highway fund? Well, that's when they took the balance down from 50% down to 15%. And so 50% is a huge number, that's $75 million, you know, that they could sit on. Now it's 15%. That's a little bit dangerous though, too. I mean, I, don't get me wrong, we'd rather have our own dollars out here to put to work. But when we get to a, a bad economy, 15% is not a lot of, not a lot of room to ride waves out in that particular number.
Yeah, but of course, we'd rather have, have our money than have them have our money.
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Mike, I've got a question.
Sure.
Brad, what you had mentioned about going back to 2014, was that because that was the last year there was an increase?
No, but you know, we've inched our way down.
Right.
So looking at a, a long, a long period of time, that was like a, a high point. We would never go, if you were gonna do something, that would be, you know, we've inched our way down from that point, but we.
Right. Because Mike, I'm concerned, what is the maximum that we could go? Because I'm looking at the historical, and I'm more troubled by the fact that we have three years, if we go this year, of funding deficit through the reserves. And I'm just seeing this trend getting bigger and bigger.
Yeah, so.
I'm looking at page 28.
Right.
That we're not really cutting, we're just adding and living off of the reserves.
So, yeah, that's, the, the concern right now is, revenues are just not coming in strong. When you look at income tax only coming in 2%, and your property tax levy on the general fund, on the operating side, is only coming in 3.4%. That is, is pretty low, considering the economy, what's going on out there right now. But your expenses, when you look at your personnel expenses, up almost 10% from 18 to 19. And then you look at what's being requested in capital, a lot of that can be corrected pretty quickly, so.
Corrected quickly, what do you mean?
Well, you have $7 million of capital sitting in the budget request right now. So if you took that out, you're gonna get close to imbalance pretty quickly.
Right, no, I'm not, I guess I'm looking at more the ongoing permanent expenses.
I would, I would say, after you get through your process of evaluating budgets, I'm going to be updating that, based on all that. And then you can really sit down and see what that trend looks like, like, all right, now we've kinda right-sized the budget for, for 19, now what's that trend look like going from?
Will you?
I can do that pretty quickly.
Could you do this quickly? Would you, I mean, in the number, would you be able to put in there what the 1%, 2% tax caps? And give us an idea, because what we would put in as a budget is not necessarily what we would get if we had the higher rate because of the cutoffs.
Now, you lose.
I mean, I'm guessing that we would lose a bigger percentage?
Or, or the local governments too.
Yeah, it's multi-layered, right, right now.
I just, I mean, if it's, if it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, that's not a big deal. But if it's.
Right.
A million or more, then that's more of a concern, just to make sure that we really know what we're, would be getting.
That's correct. And so I, I would have to account for, that's not, that takes a little more time to do that. But right now, on the property tax collections, you're losing about 7.7% of your property taxes.
If you, you got a 1% cap, you got us every year trying, we go through this budget, try to do the most fiscally responsible budget that we possibly can. He, you know, he's talking about property tax caps over there, but that, they divide it up based on that, that if you start getting close to that cap, when it comes to say what Carmel, Fishers, and other, other places are doing.
Right, no, that's right, that percent.
We basically could get penalized for.
Someone else, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, that's right. So if, in an ideal world, everybody's, now that we're in these tax cap system, in an ideal world, if everybody's taxes would just remain flat, I mean, no, no tax rate, there wouldn't be a change in the circuit breaker loss, nor would there be a change in someone else getting some of your dollars. Now you're kinda all playing in the same sandbox, trying to, to pull those dollars.
If we were at a higher tax rate. If we were at a higher tax rate, and let's just say, for argument's sake, everybody else stays the same, would we get more lit then?
Not if it's new debt. Not if it's new debt. New debt is no longer included in the calculation of lit.
I mean, I mean debt, I meant our tax rate going up, proper tax rate.
Right, so the only way you can get it to go up would be if you were to do an appeal on the maximum levy. Now that's why I also encourage you to keep your CCD rate at the maximum, because that does get included in that lit distribution.
Okay.
And so we're trying to take advantage of all the options to keep that lit distribution as close as we can. Now, in 2020, because of the AV growth, the assess valuation growth, and that factor being low, I think we're going to qualify for a growth appeal next year, and I've actually got that built in here. So again, to maximize that lit calculation.
And CCD, we could increase. I was thinking, I'm not saying I'm for it, but that something could be increased.
Yeah, there's no, there's a maximum CCD.
And we're at the maximum?
Yeah.
Okay, good enough.
We reestablish that at the maximum.
Okay.
So we continue to keep those pressed as tight as we can.
Got you. One question. One of the big draws, I know, is Clay Township in the lit, because of that debt that they had for the park.
Right.
Do you know roughly when that's going to roll off?
Yeah, I do. And unfortunately, they issued that right before, fortunate for them, unfortunate for everybody else, they issued that right before July 1, 2005. And bond issues tend to be 20 years, and that is getting part of that calculation. If you want to see that
I just know that's a heavy, heavy thing for everybody in the county.
Yeah, so if you go to page 42, you'll see the townships to the left there. And if you slide over under Clay Township, they're getting $4 million, almost $4.3 million of the 2019 lit. When you look at the townships as a whole, all the townships combined, they're getting $8.1 million. And it's because of that, it's because of that park bond that they did back in 2005. That's the old, that's still considered old debt, and that gets put into the calculation of the lit. So in 2025, hopefully when they pay that bond off, some of those dollars will be given back to all the other, it'll start to spread back into the other units of government. So, but it's, but everyone is rolling off, including you, over the years of that old debt. So anything issued prior to July 1, 2005 was part of the debt, or part of the lit calculation. Anything issued after that. But everybody's hitting that at different points. Townships, libraries, cities and towns are all hitting that at different points. And so, but in Clay Township's case, it is going to, it's going to ride the full life until 2025. And even then, it's not going to, like, pop in in '26, because the calculation is the prior year property tax levy and the prior year distribution. Well, once the property tax drops off, it will start to affect it, but the prior year distribution's still that larger number. So it takes about three years for it to even work itself out of the system.
All this is based on, not to bog you down with stuff outside of county, but that's still based on that. I mean, you look at Carmel, what they're collecting compared to Fishers and everybody else.
Right.
So then, moving forward, I'm just hypothetically, in 10 years from now, what will it be? Because all the debt perceived would be gone by then, so it would, is it CCD? Is that what would be for us?
CCD is still in that calculation, so we want to keep that
Okay, what would stay, what would stay in that calculation for cities, townships?
The same thing. Basically, their maximum levy in their CCD fund at that point.
Okay, good enough.
Any other questions for Mike?
Thank you very much.
That's fine.
I'm a phone call away, and I'll have to get you another number yet.
Okay.
Steve, can we have five minutes?
Sure.
Let's have a five-minute recess, please.
Mike, sorry.
...hearings again, it's eight thirty, and the assessor, Robin Ward.
Well, Robin's coming up, I would like to let you guys know with something, Dawn's found two things, and so she's worked diligently coming up to these hearings, but your ten million, four eighty-two that Mike is asking you to cut, we have that down now to two point six million because of, we had a budget line item in the capital that was five million that we'll be able to cut, and then as we go throughout the day, Dawn's found money in the show's budget.
But, Robin, Robin Mills, that is.
Excuse me, Robin Ward.
All right.
When you say, when you found five million out of capital, does that mean no new capital for nineteen? The requests that have been made?
Right.
Because there are many, many departments have made, that's above what they've requested.
So that seven that he was saying that you could take from different places, that five million doesn't have to be taken from.
Okay, well, that makes, that makes Mr. Coza feel better right away.
And then the two point eight, as we go through, Dawn can let you know where she has found that throughout the day.
Good.
Two point eight is our target, is what you're saying?
Uh, be it two point, let's go two point six five?
Round it to three.
That's not.
There's plenty of room from what you're saying.
Okay, Robin, go ahead. Thank you for your patience.
Problem.
Robin Ward, did you follow budget guidelines?
I did.
And are you asking for new full-time people?
New full-time people, no.
That's all I got, it looks like a move.
Well, I've got a new position, but you proved that.
Right.
That's a vacant position.
New in budget year nineteen.
I see some just moving, right?
Yes, it is.
Moving from one position to another.
Right, yep.
I don't have any quick.
All right, let's look, give us, give it a minute.
I'm just saying, thanks for your hard work.
Just speaking for myself, sir.
Okay, I got nothing either.
Thank you for everything you do.
Guys, are you done?
Are you bleeding?
Am I done?
No wounds anywhere?
I knew I'd look easier.
One at a time, please. Don't leave ya.
Oh, okay, yes.
Any updates on dark box?
We are current with all of our dark box assessments, we've settled all of ours. We actually had an appeal on, I want to say Humdick Pole and Menard, and they withdrew after we strong-armed them a little bit. They were, I mean, we lowered everybody, so they really didn't have a complaint. We made a little bit of adjustment on the coals, but other than that, we're, we're current on our commercial appeals, so we're feeling pretty good about that. It's gonna help in the long run. You know, before, we came in and I had back years, I was trying to settle, and so we've got, we're current now, we're at eighteen appeals. We just had one eighteen appeal go to the state, so we'll see, and it was a commercial building on Meridian, I couldn't even tell you which one it is. Right now, we're, we're hanging in there.
So, I mean, you're saying there's not, nobody's doing anything right now, so everything's kind of calm?
In Hamilton County, yes, the, the other counties are still fighting it, and it'll be back, or, or it'll be something else.
The legal expenses will continue to climb.
It seems, right?
Yep.
Well, appreciate you keeping us on, on top of it.
We appreciate your effort, and I think people from around the state should appreciate Robin's effort on that dark box issue, because it had the potential to be a time bomb.
Yeah, and some of the bigger counties, you know, have been dealing with it for years.
Yeah.
Now, the smaller counties, you know, Boone County, which is rising, is dealing with the brand-new Meyer under appeal, and it's at the state, so.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Robin. Appreciate it.
You guys had fun today.
Moving on to aviation. Brad, welcome, good morning. The gentleman that loves to come up to see us.
Thank you, good morning. To answer Brad's questions right off, we believe we are in compliance with the budget instructions. What is before you is recommended by the Airport Authority Board. In short, the support that you have offered the past couple of years has helped us significantly catch up on some deferred maintenance items. This budget continues that effort as we continue to see growth. In fact, our operators are attracting an aver, a tanker load of fuel on average every two point three days at this point.
You hear what he said? A semi-tanker of Jet A every two point five days is going through our airport.
That's incredible.
It is incredible, that's a lot of fuel, and we get pennies on the gallon, so.
Yeah.
Good. The only other point I'd make to Brad's comment on capital, this year is the first year we've actually put in an actual, built an actual budget for the airport's capital fund, it's labeled ten twenty-five. These are dollars that are, have historically been set aside for the airport through the old TIF fund, I believe it was. This year, instead of coming to you, as I did last week, for the additional appropriation on the parking lot, if you recall, in 2019, we're proposing, since we have our own internal plan of projects in the next five years, rather than come for additionals throughout the year, put those projects in an actual budget for your approval at the appropriate time, which would be now. So that's, that's the only difference.
This is completely an off-the-wall question, but when the state decided to go to another county airport, did they ask us, or was it even worth pursuing?
We didn't have the space available.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Right, just quick, like, just can refresh my memory really quick, I see operating supplies went from five thousand to forty-one thousand, just curious on that kind of thing right there on the budget. That's quite a percentage jump, you may have said something about this before, but...
No, please, what page is one, I'm sorry, Fred?
Uh, page one of your budget, yeah.
Operating supplies.
There's, there's, there's the airport author, there's the, there's the total breakdown here.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Sure, so operating supplies, we started last year at our fixed-based operator's request using a solid de-icing material on the runway. We agreed a budget amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars per winter season. That was not historically something that had been accounted for, so it is included, we moved dollars around, there's no overall increase in the budget.
It was a transfer.
We just found thirty thousand dollars to accommodate that request.
And that's a new, just a new thing you're doing?
It is, and it'll, it is, like I said, at the time being, it remains capped at thirty thousand dollars per winter season.
You said a solid what item?
It's a solid de-icing material, so it isn't salt.
Gotcha.
It's not the liquid that you see on the highway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Have a great day.
You too, thanks.
Next, the auditor's office, Robin Mills presenting.
Oh, God.
Remember, I give you your information.
Remember, she's the one that, she's over there. Her chief deputy's the one that found the five million dollars.
She's over there, bodies are buried.
I just think that she keeps mine on the rails, you know?
Robin, before you get started, I did thank the auditor's office before you were here this morning for all your hard work in preparation for all these budget hearings and the budget books, so we thank you very much.
Yes.
Oh, well, you're welcome, and this lady right here has, that's, that's a lot of her effort, and, you know, I got a great staff, and, you know, couldn't do it without her, couldn't do it without any of them, so I appreciate those comments.
You guys are the glue.
So, appreciate that.
Thank you, go ahead.
You'll find that this week, I sent you an email regarding our CAFER report, Suzanne Miller, who has been with us since, well, she's been with us for a long time, because she was with the State Board of Accounts, she retired, I hired her to do our CAFER, and unfortunately, due to some unforeseen circumstances, she had to retire from helping us, so in your email, I let you know that I went through the proper protocol, the commissioners entered into an agreement pending funding with H.J. Umball to pick up where Suzanne has left off, and so with that being said, I need to unfortunately ask you for another twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to add to what we paid Suzanne in order to, to hire Umball.
I saw that, I saw that email.
And, like I said, Umball does a lot with us, with Dawn and I, on continuing disclosures, there's some debt reports that they will pick up and do, that takes Dawn a couple of days, so it's with that that I'm asking you guys to increase my budget, the twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, to hire Umball.
We'll just do it as the budget process. Now, outside of that, did you follow budget guidelines, and are you asking for new full-time employees?
Uh, no full-time employees, we're making some stuff work with part-time that you've allowed us, I'm big with cross-training, I know, I believe it was Rick and Jeff come in this last year to kind of meet my staff and learn a little bit about what we do, so we're making it work.
I learned enough that I would never, ever want her job.
Yeah, don't, don't go past that one desk where our mail is, just stop right there.
Yeah, stop and do not go in.
We, uh, when we were at the, you know, the annual meeting that we did up at the casino there, was that, that was Umball doing a lot of that presentation, was that that group there?
Uh, yeah, they, they had a couple of presentations, I think Jason was there, and, and we've worked with him as well, so.
Okay.
So, that's my request, and I appreciate it, and thank you for what you've done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you for what you do for us. Okay, moving on to the county clerk, Tammy Bates.
Here's the real money, right here.
Morning, Tammy.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Kathy.
Kathy?
I believe I stayed within the guidelines, the only variation would be in the area of elections, which obviously, we have no discretion, we have to have that money, so I believe everywhere else, we stayed where we were supposed to stay.
So, you stayed within budget guidelines, and you're not asking for new full-time people?
Correct.
I know we're adding machines, right?
Um, not adding machines, we did purchase the forty machines we had leased for a while, right now, we're adding equipment to speed up the election process, and also it will eliminate maybe some human error, but we're doing that now, that's not in this, so.
Anything on adding maybe more voting centers, or extending hours, or...
This election cycle, we have the same amount of satellites, Westfield, Carmel, Fishers, and then here, next year's a city election, so we will look at that again, probably the same areas, then in 2020 is when we'll probably try to expand it to another level, once it's a presidential election again.
Kathy, do you have identified the locations you're gonna use for next year's municipal election?
No, we have not.
Have not identified?
No.
Who's gonna let you in and who's not, as far as physical location?
Correct. Currently, we're at Westfield City Hall, which I assume they would let us back, Fishers City Hall, which I assume would let us back.
Yeah.
And Carmel Library.
Okay.
Which has been a really good working relationship with them. Beyond that, you know, I don't know, I, I know, for 2020, I would like to look at the fairgrounds for some additional use of...
So, you do have, for the municipal elections, you have, do you have your sites located?
I am, I have not secured them, those would be the places I would go to, to start with, just like we're using right now, so, you know, you always have the risk of, especially Fishers, they may at some point remodel down there and kick us out, you know, I mean, those are the things we, we don't know of, but that's what we would look at, but for the next presidential, I would hope that we would be able to open even some more satellites for the month.
Under the current election workers, and then the requested, can you describe which is what's what, in terms of, you have four categories, and you're listing six new ones?
Oh, okay, yeah, the, all right, for the two twenty-five, that, okay, that would be the inspector, assuming they attend training, the two hundred would be an inspector that didn't attend training, the one twenty would be a Democrat judge that came back on the election night with the returns, the one oh five would be the base salary for a clerk, a judge, and a Democrat judge who didn't come back, the ninety dollars is for our absentee board, our canvassers, our travel board, those positions, and then the forty is for the people that help on election night, we hire a few people to help downstairs with, when they're bringing the machines back, and we hire a couple of extra people in the office, and we just pay them forty dollars, oh, and, and our community service guys that come and work for us get forty dollars, and, and the reason we did that was, the old, we had been doing that, we had been using those different categories, but we were instructed that we needed to put them in specifics for the budget, or the one forty-four, if I'm talking off the right sheet, yep, yep.
And is, you specify one twenty and one oh five are for Democrats, is that...
Yes, because the Democrat, yeah, the Democrat judge is required by law to come back, unfortunately, that doesn't always happen, so if they don't come back, they're not getting paid the extra fifteen dollars.
We don't have Republican judges?
We do, but they're not required by law to come back, because your inspector is your Republican, and the Democrat, so you're supposed to have a balance when you come back.
Right.
And traditionally, what we ask them to do is, if the Democrat judge won't come back, you ask the Democrat clerk, if they won't come back, then you ask one of the other workers, and then whichever worker comes back, they get the extra fifteen dollars. But the one thing that we didn't address in here that I think we might have to look at, when we've gone to the e-poll pads, we've found that we need, the clerks like additional, would like additional training, and we don't have any basis yet to fund them if they come to training, so that might be something we look at in the future, to throw them, you know, fifteen bucks or something to, to come for training, but, and if I, can I explain the e-coder things that we got, that, they will be used for the satellites, and what they do is, currently, when a voter comes in early, you have to put in their voter ID number, because if they vote in that month, in the month before the election, and something would happen, they die, or they were convicted, or something like that, their vote is actually redacted, and the only way you can do that is, it's because it's attached to that ID number. Now, you can't tell how that person voted, because it's, as they describe it to me, it's like in a bubble, and you can't get the data, but you could pull the whole bubble out if that person died, or, or something like that, and had to be redacted. Well, what happens when the voter comes in, they key that into the actual machine, where our poll workers, I mean, it's a, it's a ID number of twenty characters, so there's a, a chance there to type in the wrong number, or there's a chance to, out of two hundred and twenty-seven precincts, to pick the wrong precinct. Well, what this does is, it takes the information right out of our system, puts it on the card, the card's put into the machine, and it brings up the correct ballot, so it takes that person that might make an error right out of the system, and we're really excited to add that feature for...
Are you saying if a person dies, then their vote doesn't count?
Correct, it's, yeah, not our preference, but that's what the law says, so.
Any other questions for Kathy or Tammy?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
And move on to commissioners.
No.
No.
Sorry, community corrections.
There's two.
That's the old one.
That's the old agenda.
That's the old agenda.
You need to go to the new agenda, which is your PAC.
Morning, Ralph.
Morning, how are you doing today?
Good, thank you.
I don't have it either.
The proposed budget, first of all, your, our budget, the only thing that is in county general is personnel, and also the, the county misdemeanor fund, so we remain within the budget guidelines.
We're talking into that, Mike.
I'm sorry, is that better? Yeah, we, all of our, our budget from, from county general and the county misdemeanor fund are for personnel, and we remain within the budget guidelines, as given to us by the auditor's office. I would be happy to answer any questions for you about our other funding, if you wish. I, I do want to give you an update on where we are with our facility, we, as of first part of July, we've been in the building nine years now, and the projections at that time from the Husky report, for those of you that might remember that report, was that, that, that first floor, or the, the second floor should serve us for ten years, right at ten years. We're in a little better shape than, than that, but currently, today, we are at sixty-three percent, I'm sorry, we are at sixty-three percent capacity, and we're, we're noticing that each year, our capacity grows a little more. Last year, we, we were at fifty-nine percent capacity on average, so we're seeing, we're seeing some growth this year in our capacity within the building, it's something that, you know, down the road, we need to continue to think about how we're gonna use that third floor. Again, I know that you hear sixty-three percent capacity, and you're saying, hey, what, why are we talking about the third floor at all, but it is something that we need to begin thinking about how that might look, what, what, what some of the options could be for future services that we could provide in that space, I, I think it's just something that we could try and be proactive about, as opposed to getting to a point where I'm in here saying, we're full, and we have to do something quickly.
You're getting a new furnace in your building, ain't you?
Yes, I noticed, we're getting a new heating system, and we're converting from the total electric, and new heating system, and the solar project, of course, on our building is finished, I think it's close to being finished countywide, and it's made a, according to Mr. Woods, it's made a significant difference in the utilities for our building, which I know are, are expensive, so.
Yeah. Now, even if you were asking for new full-time employees, that wouldn't be a part of the county budget, is that correct?
Right, I would not be doing that, no, in fact, what we did, we restructured some of employee duties this year, because of, we knew the limitations of future grant funding over the next few years, we restructured some of our staff duties, which it allowed us to actually increase our capacity, as far as how many individuals we could supervise without hiring additional personnel.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ralph? Thank you, Ralph.
Keep up the good work, Ralph.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're getting him.
Dawn's getting him.
Thank you very much.
I think because we changed after that we had gotten the books, I think Dawn had thought we already had the updated ones, but we only got them via email, and so she's printing new schedules for us.
We're gonna move on to Corner.
Thank you.
Good morning, Dawn.
Good morning, Ralph.
Good morning.
With one exception, we have a potential liability on overtime, and I looked at that, and with the amount of potential overtime and back pay for overtime, even with the burden, it would be cheaper to put on an additional deputy full-time. We talked about that when we initially set up the department three and a half years ago, we were agreed when we hit four hundred cases, we would add an additional full-time person. Right now, we are at case two ninety-nine, and we'll catch a run here later today, that will be three hundred, and we still have the balance of September, October, November, and December to go, and traditionally, the holidays are the heavy time, so I'm projecting somewhere around four hundred and fifty to four hundred and seventy-five cases.
Okay, so, other than overtime, you followed budget instructions, you asked for one new full-time employee, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what's the update on the morgue, is the morgue open for business?
We just finished our first autopsy in the new morgue this morning, and everything went fine, minor things, and we need another wastebasket, and we need a disposal thing in the bathroom, but those are things we can take care of in ten minutes, but everything went smooth, operated just fine, I think that's going to be a real asset to the county as our population continues to grow. One of the things we're seeing is a shift in the age group of people that are passing on, this is a wonderful place to retire, but those people that retire, unfortunately, may not have had the best diet in their life, and a lot of the baby boomers, the number-one killer is heart disease, and we're seeing that time after time. Add to that, the drug problem with the opiate epidemic, and our numbers are swelling, and a function also of increased population.
Can I ask you a question, I think also, if you throw in an increase of hospitals?
Yes.
And I wondered if you had looked at Riverview opening the Westfield Hospital, pulling in from Tipton County, even as far as maybe north of this southern section of Kokomo type area, what that would, if there's anything in those surrounding counties that we wouldn't have, and I should say normally gotten, because the hospitals have been in Noblesville and in Carmel, but with it closer on thirty-one, do you know what that percent population might be?
Well, right now, if the hospitals that are planned and have been built will be at thirteen in the county, if St. Vincent gets its way next year, and they build that one, that'll be fourteen hospitals in the county.
St. Vincent or St. Francis?
Pardon?
St. Vincent or St. Francis, because I saw a thing in the paper yesterday, said St. Francis was gonna build something.
St. Francis is talking about it, but that hasn't been approved by the Indiana State Department of Health.
Thank you.
The St. Vincent one was a preliminary, and that was put on hold for a year.
Right.
What they've done, if you look, they're very smart marketing people, they put them at key positions along the interstate and at the borders of our county, so they draw from Madison County, they draw from Marion County, they draw from Tipton County, the IU system pulls people out of Marion, Indiana, quite frequently, so we wind up with all those people in addition to our own citizens, if they die here, it becomes our county's case. It's gonna have a significant impact.
Okay. Did you make, for those adjustments, for the 2019 budget?
Yes, I have, it's hard to tell how many people are going to die, what we look is at the trends, and we can project forward.
Okay.
So, I've had to add fifty-nine thousand dollars into the budget in the line item for autopsies.
Okay.
That's on what we anticipate the increase will be next year.
Including the new hospital.
We are right now at a balance of about seventy-two thousand dollars with today's autopsy, and if we look at how many going forward, that's not going to cover the end of the year, and unfortunately, I'll have to come back to this august body and be asking for more money. This budget going forward for 2019, we tried to allow for that, and put in a realistic number based on this increase we've seen.
And have you put in there the increase of just having the Riverview Hospital, another hospital brought into the picture? I mean, I know it's a tough number to pick, but...
That's not a...
But with more people, with it being a bigger radius, and people from other parts of the, other counties bringing, brought into that hospital, that wouldn't normally come into...
I can't predict the future accurately.
Okay. Okay.
When we built this morgue, we considered that Riverview was building Westfield.
Right.
So we have capacity for 20, whereas in the past, the maximum capacity, including funeral homes, was six.
Yeah.
So we've got a significant increase. We also have provisions for those of you who toured the morgue, that if we have to, we can put a third tier on the stacking units and that'll pick us up nine more spaces. So I think we've planned as well as we can.
Okay.
It's sort of a dart at a board in the future, but we base that dart we threw at what the trends have been.
The 59,000 is probably conservative then?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Corner?
No.
Saying none? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Moving on to Tab 8, Council.
The only thing I noticed was that the YAP people, their, our budget.
Yes.
What? Any other questions for ourselves?
Moving on to Judicial Services, Pre-Trial Services Program.
Who is in here?
A few minutes early. Take a 10-minute recess?
Yeah, one thing.
Sure.
They don't start at 10:05, is that correct?
My wife, Trina, made some snacks over here, some chocolate chip bars and was it the auditor that paid for the other stuff or was it you?
It was not me, it was Dawn.
Okay, Dawn. So anyway, we got a few snacks, give me $5 apiece and we'll reimburse Dawn for the stuff she brought in for our consumption.
I gave Dawn 10 bucks already.
Yeah, good, thank you. You sure try the chocolate chip bars.
Thank you for bringing those.
They were made last night. They're pretty good.
Thanks for bringing those, Brad.
You told him to shut off because he didn't.
It's not.
At this time, we'll restart our budget hearings. Judicial Services with Ollie. Good afternoon, Ollie, or good morning, Ed.
Good morning. I guess I always kind of deviate from guidance and ask for additional funds, and so I have done so again this year because courts four, five, and six now feel the need for a law clerk, not a law clerk, but actually an attorney-law clerk.
He's right there, Don. He's walking in.
So that they have the ability to have someone do some extra work for them. As I pointed out in my justification, it looks like it's probably going to be at least another two years before there's building space where we would be able to go to the Commission on Courts and ask for additional courts. And in the meantime, well, we've become much more efficient due to electronic filing of everything. We've gotten rid of a lot of paper, paper in the courthouse, but now we have a lot more electronic things flying around all over the place. And as I indicated, sometimes it's more efficient, but even though you're more efficient, it creates more work. And so I would tell you that some of the judicial officers have been in here on the weekends working on this stuff, and late at night, trying to get this stuff cleared out of their queues in Odyssey. And so I think that the justification speaks for itself, and I would ask that you give that favorable consideration for an increase of about $34,000 so that the three judges would have one person who they would share for 20 hours a week.
Okay, so is that part-time money, or are you?
That is, that's correct. That would be part-time, 20 hours a week, not a.
All right. Okay.
Ollie, were you guys asking a question, or?
No.
Question I have for you on that, same thing. The current one is solely for Superior Court One, or is it shared with the others?
No, the current ones are just solely in those courts. So Circuit Court has one that just does Circuit Court, and one has one that just does one. And I think you probably know Judge Nation has the greatest caseload workload of any of the courts, and so that's Valerie Hine, and Valerie serves a lot of times as a pro tem in one. She does almost all of the adoption hearings in one, and we have a lot of adoptions that go on.
And then two and three don't have anybody?
Two does, and in three, Judge Hughes has Jeff Wagner, who's a licensed attorney, and he's also the bailiff, and so Jeff kind of wears about four or five different hats there. And then Judge Hughes, from time to time, does bring in a law student as a law clerk, but not another licensed attorney.
Any other questions for Ollie? Say none. Thank you, Ollie. We also have.
If you have any questions on pretrial, I don't see Stephanie here, I'd be happy to answer those. Not asking for any increased money in pretrial.
I have none. I think no others. Thank you, Ollie.
Thank you.
Tricia Akers is here with the Youth Assistance Program. Morning, Tricia.
Good morning. We're not asking for any additional fees. We appreciate your, her funding. Excuse me, we appreciate your support, as always, and would hope that we could go with what was proposed to us.
Give us a quick rundown, because we're on schedule. Give us a quick rundown of who you got and what different school systems. How many people you got here, there, and?
Sure. So in Westfield, Washington School District, we have Christine Brown as full-time, and we have Megan Contreras as part-time with a maximum of 28 hours per week. In Noblesville School System, we have Brandy Egan and Ashlyn Cavender, both as full-time early intervention advocates for that school system. For Fishers, Hamilton Southeastern School District, we have Tricia Strauss as full-time, and Dee Chandler as part-time with the 28-hour-a-week maximum. For, let's see, where am I? For Sheridan, we have Lisa Samuel's full-time employee, and for Hamilton Heights, we have Mary Ann Haymaker as full-time employee.
There was a, I didn't read the article closely, but there was something about Fishers and YMP or something. It was something. Is that, how does that organization mesh or not mesh with yours, with ours?
So Youth Mentoring Initiative is an in-school mentoring program.
Uh huh.
So it is kind of like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, but for in-school only. So what we do is we refer to them for mentoring kiddos who would like that in-school mentoring program. So they're just a menu of services in our calendar, if you will, and our.
Thank you.
We can utilize.
So it is, it does help your organization?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Tricia? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great afternoon. Chris is here. Do we want to kind of amend our agenda and skip the break and move on with our IS?
We could just move the surveyor up if you wanted. He's here because he's at the very bottom before lunch.
Oh, let's don't do that. Let's just go with Chris.
Okay.
Better go with that?
Whatever.
You're following me, I mean.
Chris, welcome. Good morning.
Thanks for moving ahead, because I gotta go to a meeting downtown anyway, so I was hoping I'd catch you before break. We made, I requested a slight increase in a couple of line items. One was operating supplies. We are looking at enhanced cybersecurity protection for our desktop level, so the desktops at the county. We've done some advanced threat protections that are scanning emails, and I can tell you, over the last few weeks, we've seen a huge increase in the number of emails that contain malware that that product is catching, upwards of 50 to 100 a day that are catching. We also use some advanced analytics software on our network that monitors what users do and looks for behavior that's not normal, that would indicate some kind of attack, and that is working well as well. We haven't seen any attacks, but what we see is if a user, for example, at the jail, one of my staff went into a training room and logged in to all the machines in the training room at once, that software flagged that as behavior that's not normal, which would be ideal for us if that were to actually occur. We would like to extend that advanced threat protection down to the desktop level.
That's what this $50,000 increase is.
We've estimated that's $50,000 to cover all the desktops in the county.
Other than that, Chris, did you follow budget guidelines?
I did. Well, I also asked for an additional in professional services, which our maintenance agreements just increase every year. I mean, that's, it's software maintenance agreements and things that we cover for software that we have to have. Tax software, billing software, assessment, those typically go up, and we've asked for a 4% increase in that line item. No, we've filled all the positions you granted last year, and I'll just say that that seems to be working out really well. We've got the project manager on board, which has so far been an exceptional addition to the staff. And then we've got an additional person at the Public Safety Campus to help with the workload there, and then one in our office, a technical person.
Is this your Julie's leaving?
Julie is leaving. She's retiring.
You've got that covered.
We just, we just hired and he promoted, actually, from within, an individual to take that spot. Effective, it was effective Monday. Have a conditional offer then to backfill the vacant position that we promoted, and so that's covered. We're doing that.
I do want to just say too, just because Chris and I talk fairly frequently, but he sent me a spreadsheet. You know, when they come in and ask for new people or where they fall within that level, when he provided the spreadsheet, he actually comes in below. So just as a note of reference, he's very, he's being very conscious when he is in the hiring process, and.
Well, I, you know, the thing about it is, I know.
How Julie's been here longer than me. She was like the historic memory of computer in the county government, and so she'll. She'll be a loss, but everybody retires and we go on, and as long as he's.
If that's covered, I guess.
I have a question too, and I meant to follow up. I forwarded you an email or a screenshot, because I didn't want to forward it.
Yes.
Of a pay, it looked like a scam email. Do you, did you ever find out what that was?
Back and look. When did you send that?
Oh, it's been probably a month ago. It was like a pay, like you'd been given a tick, not to me, but it was from a county employee who had forwarded it.
Oh.
And it had said you had been ticketed.
Yes.
For a violation, so that's just a scam. I just didn't know if that was going out to, but it looked, I mean, if you weren't paying attention.
So just to follow up, if I could, on what Amy said, that when I come and ask for permission to hire above the minimum, and I know I've done that, I did that several times in this year, really, it's just to have the flexibility to, when we get a, if we have a really good candidate that has some years of experience, to be able to offer that rather than have to go through the, what could be another month delay in coming back and asking for an increase. I kept track of where I fell relative to what you approved, and like she said, I was about 25.
Twenty-three nine, I think, was the.
Thousand under, so I'm not always going to that max of what you're approving. I'm trying to put them where they belong on the scale when they come in. I just hate to do that delay in the IT market the way it is today. I think if we had to wait potentially a month or month and a half to get back on your agenda, I would lose those candidates. So I appreciate that.
Chris, do you have any knowledge of some efforts by the state, I think it's by state government, to expand.
High-speed internet.
Through rural areas or through areas that are not served by high-speed internet. Do you have any?
There was just an announcement on that, actually.
The 5G, 5G has been a discussion.
It was just, they just did an announcement on that yesterday.
Yeah.
How about people that got no G?
Yeah. Yeah, I've heard conflicting things about 5G. I didn't read the full announcement that came out yesterday from the state, but you know, 5G, a lot of, a lot of people think it's going to solve the rural thing, broadband issue, but I have my doubts, because 5G doesn't, the distance it covers isn't very far, and there needs to be a population density, because you're going to have to have towers really close together. And unless there's, you know, money that those big companies that deploy that are getting from federal, state, local governments somewhere.
So the 5G initiative really doesn't help somebody that's not being served right now?
Yeah, I can't say 100%, but I've listened to a lot of different views on it, and I don't know that it's going to help the rural areas as much as people think it is.
Chris, this is off-topic on budget, but you sent me, I thought, or maybe it came out, if we get one of these emails that got past our filters, where should we forward it to?
Well, there's a button now on the Outlook toolbar that you can push that says "Report Email." It'll, it'll report, it'll report it. If you suspect it, go ahead and report it, because it'll just report it to Microsoft and. Questions?
I have none.
So much.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it, Chris.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
Okay, now you get what I was saying. I was kind of like, what?
I just didn't want to bump him in front of Chris.
Got it, okay, I was.
And I just checked with, he's perfect, we're fine, coming up early.
You're up, Ken.
Welcome.
Okay.
It is here.
Get the knives out now. Here's the big money.
Good morning. Huh? Are you twirling the wheel? Go and take money. Good morning. Mr. Ward, how are you? I'm fine, thank you, and yourself?
I'm good.
Did you go with our guidelines?
I did not.
There you go. I told you.
Are you wanting to hire new full-timers?
No.
Okay.
Brad's stealing your thunder. That's Brad's.
I know, but the last couple, he hasn't really asked it, and so I've been waiting and waiting.
Yeah. On line 3,001, under professional services, that was increased $1,225 for the drainage board attorneys expenses. And on line 6,100, inter-fund transfers, that increased $95,180, which reflects $180 increase per IC 3692744. And general drain fund, $95,000 increase. Those are the two increases.
What was the drain, so what?
Why would we want to give you $95,000? Is this coming out of County General?
Yes.
And, and why is that not supported by your drainage fees?
Okay. General drain fund is kind of like the bank. This is what we borrow the money from to do the construction projects and the reconstruction projects, and also to backfill on maintenance funds that go down in the negative until the next cycle for assessments come in, we can pay it off. So when we borrow that money for those projects, reconstruction and construction, that's payable back on a five-year period. Get the money back in by those landowners. So it's kind of a bank.
Are you saying that the $95,000 would be replaced?
It would be replaced by assessments as those assessments go out.
But it would never go back into the general fund?
I'm sorry, Brad.
Never go back into the general fund?
It stays in that fund, in the General Drain Improvement Fund, GDIM.
So many projects, you need additional front money?
Doing a lot. We're, the projects up in Sheridan, luckily, we got a federal grant on. That was 2.1 million over three phases. We've got.
Thorpe Creek.
Thorpe Creek's coming up. That hearing, I think, is this month. Enderwood is another hearing that's coming up. That's the ditch beside it. We have the McCarty that's coming in. That's going to be probably in the million-dollar range. We have the EMH here that's under design now.
I don't, I don't doubt that you have drain repairs and whatnot, but as I remember, back in the recession of '08, '09, we actually borrowed money from your drain funds to help us with our cash flow problems. I don't understand why there isn't money in these other ones that are waiting to be rebuilt that can't be used for this.
I believe that money came out of maintenance, did it not, Don?
All right, Ben.
I think it was out of maintenance funds.
Okay, so.
And he was hitting on the question I was going to ask. That's what I had written down. Don't we have a, isn't there funds that you have, your own kind of funds? What are the balances in the funds that you have currently?
Total? I don't know. That's probably about 7.9 million.
And none of that can be moved around?
No, we can't. The statute prohibits us from using that money for another drain.
If we borrowed money in the past, if we front the $95,000, Brad is our way to get it back.
Saying we get, they use it, but it don't ever come back to the general fund?
How do we get money before then?
Did he get the money?
No, how did, yeah, how did Brad get the money in '08?
The first rule of plumbing is a very complicated issue. But I, you know, they, I don't know. You know, I don't not trust the surveyor to tell us he needs some front money to get these projects going, but then some brothers with the legislature make all these rules about, okay, we got $7 million, but you can't use that money. Go to the county council, get some more money out of the county general fund.
Yeah, that's what gets me, is there's seven million.
Yeah, that's what gets me, is there's, there's, there's 7 million...
So, you can do some more drainage work.
I got you.
Okay.
My, my hands are tied just like yours.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not here to beat you up. I'm just saying, it don't make no sense, but...
And maybe I, and I'm going to piggyback on what Brad said. You're going from $19,000 to $114,000. What's the justification for it?
Is that, is it, it's a Sheridan deal up there? Is that what it's really for?
No, that's being paid by money through a federal loan.
And it's an, it's an, a big improvement for the people of Sheridan. I'm not, if you told me that's what it was for, I'd probably give you the money.
Well, that particular loan, this is the first one in the country that's like this. So, we're breaking new ground here for everybody. It's thinking outside the box, and what, what happens is Sheridan actually borrows the money and gives that money to us to do the project. Now Sheridan has created a stormwater utility, and over the next 40 years, they're paying that money back through that utility. Now, the way we're able to do that is that the Drainage Board charged them a capacity fee, just like in a sanitary sewer, for that drainage to come to us.
Yeah.
And that's how this all transpired. So, it's totally new thinking.
Okay. I just did not realize there was any downhill drums here.
There is.
So, Kent currently has 18,300 in your maintenance, and you've got 5,126 in your general drain funds.
You have $23 million, and you can't move any of that money around? They won't let you do that?
Not the maintenance, no.
What about the general? What'd you say heading the general?
5.1.
What about the 5.1?
Robin, is that all available monies, or is some of that paid out already?
That's the investment balance.
That's the investment balance? Okay.
Because they're getting, you don't have to, you don't have to appropriate your drains, so I don't know what your cost is off of, off of this cap.
It's going to be pretty thin if all these get paid and are built. The other problem that we're getting to right now are the costs. Our costs are 30% over what we're doing last year.
Well, thank God for a full employment economy, huh?
And a $5 million investment fund.
I, I would say, so, so Kent, you want to tell us that you're going to do $5 million worth of work in '19?
We're going to get awful close to it.
The surveyor's office is the largest contractor in the county. That's a hell of a, that's a hell of a lot of digging.
I'm still waiting for what the $95,000 is for.
I'm sorry, Rick.
I'm still waiting for what the $95,000. You're going from $19,000 to $114,000?
Well, $180 of it was for General, or for Drain Repair Fund, and that's a statutory fund, $10 per mile of drain. So, we've added enough drains to get a $180 increase. Now, the $95,000 of that is for the General Drain Improvement Fund, which is our, our bank.
And will that be used for...
$95,000, I'm, I'm sorry, Jeff, but I mean, you've been at $19,000, and you're jumping up. I guess I'm still understanding why.
Well, last...
Because he's going to do $5 million worth of drainage.
Well, he's not doing $5 million, Brad.
He's questioning $5 million, $95,000. Okay, because it, you know, that's the way to think about it.
Go ahead, Ken.
Well, we, we need that money in order to pay for those projects in the front end.
Which projects?
Drain projects that we've got on the board right now.
The $5 million project?
Not a $5 million, but $5 million worth total.
You need $95,000 of seed money, and you can't use it from the $5 million? That's what I'm grappling with.
Well, if we don't have the money, we can't do the project. If we don't have enough money to cover the project in General Drain Improvement Fund, we can't do the project.
When you're, with the $5 million, if you started, if you started depleting that next year, when this budget goes into effect, when would that money be exhausted approximately next year?
It would probably be exhausted the first of '20 because of the lag.
Well, there's time, I mean...
Yeah, there is time.
Okay.
But I have that much work on the board right now.
But just, I think, if I'm correct, Rick, his questions were what projects this $95,000 would go towards, and I'm thinking with the two hearings you have coming up, one this month for Thorpe Creek, those are probably some of the first ones that that money, seed money, would go into, correct?
Thorpe Creek, Underwood, McCarty, Ring Creek, Benton Hinesley, which is a portion of the Sheridan work, the EM hair, that's probably going to be about $3 million right there.
Okay.
I, I hear that. I really do, Ken. I'm just wondering why you can't tap the $5 million fund first for those things, you know, maybe the $95,000 is just a drop in the bucket. I'm just...
Oh, Rick, I can. I can, but it's going to be thin at the end of it, so I don't know if I'm going to have enough money for all the projects. That's what I'm getting at.
Basically being proactive instead of reactive. You're saying this is the anticipated cost.
It's either come and visit you now or come and visit you later.
Right. Either come now or come October of 2019.
I think we got it.
Okay. I got you.
Yeah. Are you asking for, or did, did Jeff already ask you to add new full-time people?
I'm not.
That's the correct answer. Okay, I got it.
I think I do, too.
Any other questions?
Nice to see you.
Thank you very much, Ken.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, we have until 10:50.
We've got the eager Beaver prosecutor sitting back there.
Well, then, you're really going to mess it up because he's in the middle of that.
We can bring him on.
Like, he's been here. He just likes hanging out and watching, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, he's tried to speed it up.
Yeah. Why don't we just bring him on? Yeah.
Okay, do whatever you want to do. That's fine. Rock it out. All right. You're up, Lee.
Lee, come forward.
Tab number 15.
Good morning.
Very much for giving me this opportunity to address my 2019 proposed budget with you. I will start out by saying that this is the first time in the eight, this is the eighth time I've appeared in front of you. This will be the first time I believe that I am not 100% in compliance with your budget instructions. I am, however, in compliance and am not seeking any increases in the 2,000, 3,000, or 4,000 series within any of the various budgets within my, under my purview. I am, however, asking for two new positions. If you will recall, I appeared before you last year, a year in which you authorized new positions, and I told you that although I felt I could have been justified asking for new positions last year, I was not at that time going to do so. I told, I warned you, however, that I would probably be appearing for you next year, and here I am today, asking for those positions that I withheld asking for last year. Couple of things I want to point out in the big picture scheme of things. First off, for each of the last eight years, I've returned a significant, or what I would consider to be a fairly substantial amount of money budgeted to my office. That figure was approximately $183,000 last year, and over the last seven years, has amounted to a little over $1.5 million that was returned to the County General Fund from my various budgets. This year, however, I am asking for those two new positions because I believe after having a period of many years of not asking for new employees or even actually having reductions, many of the early years of my first term, I, the need has arisen where we need some help. The reality is, when I, right before I took office, I believe that the prosecuting attorney's office had a total of 63 employees, including full and part-time employees. I'm at approximately 55, I believe, right now, maybe 56, somewhere in there. That's due in large part to a reduction during those first 11, 12, 13 years, when the budget, county budget was in dire straits and, and different departments were asked to make cuts. I made those cuts by not replacing people when they retired. And a number of things have happened over the course of time. We've switched from a paper world to, in 2012, I took the office to an electronic case management system. Additionally, the courts have now gone paperless, so I've been able to reduce the amount of people I have as support staff, but the prosecuting attorneys have been asked to do more and more during that period of time. Used to be prosecutor would screen a case, review everything that's presented to them from law enforcement, and make a determination what charges are going to be filed, and then write a few notes on a yellow pad, maybe write out the actual charges that would then be given to a secretary to prepare those charges, and go back far enough, they would type them up. More recently, they would use a word processor and prepare them. These days, our case management system, that's all being done by the deputy prosecuting attorneys during the screening process, so our screening people are asked to do much more. I'm asking for one new person that I know is going to be dedicated 100% to the screening team. There are a number of areas or reasons why that's increased demand in that area. Not insignificantly, law enforcement, which has continued to grow over these last eight years. If you look at the Fishers, Noblesville, Westfield, and Carmel Police Departments, they've all added law enforcement officers. Now, what they're doing is they're adding body cameras. Carmel, I believe, is the largest department in our jurisdiction, and they are scheduled to go online with body cameras at the beginning of 2019, is the last word I had from their chief. That's going to add a tremendous amount of video that's going to need to be screened and reviewed by my screening team as they are evaluating a case and making a determination as to what, if any, charges are appropriate in any given case.
Lee, can I stop you right there?
Certainly.
Obviously, it says the body cameras aren't new to other places around the country. Have you had, is there anything in your journals from other prosecutors or anything like that talk about what percent of time or man-hours that'll add within a year, just, just on body camera issues alone?
I can, I can tell you, we've had, because our little Department of Sheridan has had body cameras for a few years now, and even that little department has added a significant amount of time to reviewing those cases because, as, as attorneys, we have to review those, that everything that's presented to us to properly evaluate the case and make a determination as to what evidence we have that's admissible, not admissible, might be Brady evidence that's exculpatory in some way, and that's, that's the thing. We never know what is out there in all of these videotapes that are made, and so we have to review them. I don't have any specific data. I can tell you that other counties where they've taken on body cameras in large part in their law enforcement within their community have had to add new deputy prosecuting attorneys to address that. Tepico New County, I believe it was in 2016, added at least two or three deputy prosecutors just for screening purposes alone. I would point out, Tepico New County is substantially smaller than, than us.
And I understand that, that's why I was asking, because it sounds like with all the technologies, in some things, it saves money, saves people, in other senses, it adds people.
Yeah. It, it does. Technology is both a blessing and a curse, and with, when it comes to body cameras, that is going to add hours potentially to some cases to properly screen and evaluate them. I will also point out, as it relates to the screening team duties, the new pre-trial release program that was started here in the county has added responsibilities. We now get sent to, me and my members of my screening team, every day, we get copies of all of those assessments that are done, so those are being reviewed and are then utilized during the initial hearings, which we were not previously required to go to. We are now attending those, so that's probably an average of 15 to 20 man-hours per week that's now dedicated to that one new small program alone. That right there could justify a half a person, not even counting the body camera stuff. That's why in my letter to you, I said I, I believe I could easily justify three or four new deputies. I'm only asking for two because, quite frankly, I like to try and run as lean as we possibly can. I truly...
Three, even at three and four, you wouldn't be back to 2011 numbers?
Correct. I would not be back to 20, uh...
Ben?
2010 total numbers. I would be more than the higher DPA, and that's the reality of my office. I think as time goes by, I'm not going to be adding significantly or at all, and maybe reducing even further, the support staff. Can't say that for certain. Probably going to kind of plateau, but the reality is more and more is being asked of the deputy prosecuting level at my office. And so, I'm asking for two new, one to be solely dedicated to screening, the second will be dedicated primarily to the sex crimes position. The sex crimes position is a position that is assigned to handle all of the sex crimes in the county. A large part of that responsibility includes covering the forensic interviews that are conducted at the Chair Center of Children. Over the last several years, we've seen a significant increase in the number of forensic interviews that are conducted. For instance, going back to 2014, there were 342 forensic interviews conducted at the Chair Center. Last year, that number grew to 447. That increase of 105 additional interviews amounts to a significant amount of manpower and time that's dedicated by that deputy going to be a part of those interviews, and that's just step one of the review and screening process for any sex crimes case. They, in addition to having to be at those forensic interviews, will then have to evaluate the entire law enforcement file on each of those cases to make a determination as to whether there is sufficient evidence to go forward on a sex crimes case.
I know, do they, are they involved, then, I tell you, with a child sex crime computer issues that's based out of Fishers?
Yes, that, that sex crime...
And I know, okay, I was just saying, because I know that seems to be increasing every year.
That is, too, and that same prosecutor is the first resource for the, what's known as the Hamilton County Crimes, Internet Crimes Against Children.
Right. Okay.
So, she also assists them with obtaining search warrants throughout the year, and that, that has been an increasing responsibility. So, I feel I need another deputy that's going to be assigned to assist in all that work and all the review of all those cases and the handling of those trials. The sex crimes prosecutor is, I believe, in the middle of the fifth jury trial she's had in the last three or four months at this point in time. If you know anything about sex crimes, having one or two trials a month doesn't sound like a lot, but the reality is you are spending at least a week's worth of time prepping for that trial, and then those trials often are two to four days long, so you are spending the better part of two weeks getting ready for each and every jury trial that you have. So, having five in a four-month period really bogs her down and, and leaves it so that she's not able to cover all of the forensic interviews, she's not able to be available for all of the warrants that are needed by the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. So, that's the other area that I will primarily be assigning that new position.
Can I, can I ask you, can I butt in here a minute?
Certainly.
Lee, you're asking for two new full-time people.
Correct.
Other than that, did you follow budget guidelines?
Other than that, I did follow budget guidelines, yes. I, I don't know, there are two, well, with respect to all the other series, yes. There are two special circumstances that I might want to...
Actually, there's only one.
Okay.
You submitted prior to the correct numbers, I think, from a salary perspective. So, if you're referring to one of those special circumstances as that approximate increase of the 553...
Yeah. That's no longer bearing... Correct.
Am I correct on that, Don? Yes, so that's not...
Okay.
That's null and void, based on the fact of the movement within our...
Okay. One of the positions would have gone down 612, $6, $18. I was going to ask it to go up 553, apparently. That's been rectified by...
It's actually going up 552, just based on our...
That's perfect. That's... That's reasonable. The only other one is that one of my staff support positions is currently a commode D. I want to move her to a commode E. That's really where she should be, what she's been doing, and I want to have her salary adjusted to the level that it would be at if she'd been at that commode E position all along. The change that I proposed would put her at, even with other employees who are hired at the same timeframe that she was and that have the same basic responsibilities that she has. She's one of our rock stars, and for whatever reason, she was brought in at the commode.
That was my question, what are the costs of the shift on the commode change, and then what are the new positions?
I don't care about the new positions or new positions.
I don't want to know what they cost. I want to know what they cost.
Well, yeah, but whatever they cost, the cost of the salary and the cost of the benefits, you got to lump them in at a hundred thousand apiece.
And so actually, on that, what I'm doing is, I've currently got a commode E that is vacant. So I want to move that commode D into that commode E. I'll then leave the commode D vacant.
You don't want to, you don't want to do a card game, just get rid of that position for consideration for the two others, do you?
Not at this time, because the reality is, I'm not a hundred.
Let's make a deal. Let's have a plea agreement now.
Here's the reality. I'll tell you this, so that position has remained vacant for a fairly significant period of this year, and that's going to be why I'm going to have another significant return to the county this year. I'm not a hundred percent comfortable that we can live moving forward without that position. Right now, this morning at eight o'clock, I met with the secretaries for my misdemeanor D, Level Six felony team, which is now down to five people. Had been, I believe, if you look back at 2010, probably had six full-time, make that, yeah, six full-time and two or three part-time people. We are now down to five full-time people in that position. Works fine, operates fine when everybody's here. Got somebody going off for two and a half weeks for a surgery starting tomorrow. As soon as that's done, hopefully, God willing, have someone going that's going to be going on maternity leave for the remainder of the year. So that five positions is going to go down to four.
Right.
I'm not certain how we're going to be able to, we're working on it, and we're going to try and float, but right now, we're running so thin that when we have people out, and unfortunately, it just happens with, you know, injuries, illnesses, vacations, we have no, we have no backup.
Okay. I just thought I'd try.
So, in essence, the move of the, so it's not that you're reclassifying, you're shifting one person into the commode.
Right. I don't have a problem with that, and then keeping it a lower commode D as the empty one for now, for me to float and see if we need to utilize.
And then you're asking for two new positions, but ideally, three would be, from what I'm reading, I'm just reading.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand. Okay.
Lee, a clarification. In your write-up, second page, second, bottom of paragraph, you said two problem-solving courts that have been added since 2010 at the drug and veterans.
Drug and Veterans Court, yes. And I will let you know that they're currently under discussion, potentially two additional. A OWI court is being discussed, and a mental health court is probably not as significant a imminent movement, but the mental health court has been being discussed over the last eighteen months also.
How long does it take for a court, for that, if they're talking about it, is it twelve months out before they would have, they pretty much would say, if they say yes, that it would start, or?
It really depends. The OWI court could be more quickly, because it would kind of be a separate branch of the drug court. Mental health court would be a totally kind of new beast, so to speak.
How would that impact your staff?
They'll come and ask for funding.
Well, courts within courts. I mean, Veterans Court, when we took on Veterans Court, I'm covering Veterans Court, so I didn't ask for any new positions or.
And that's what I'm asking, he might say, I've got it covered.
Yeah. I think, I think an OWI court probably, if I get these two positions, I can, I can make it work, because what I'm going to do is have, part of the screening team is going to be responsible. Right now, myself and the supervisor for the screening team are the two people that largely cover the drug court, and then I primarily solely cover the Veterans Court at this point in time.
I just want to clarify something. Amy had said, because you said two, and you said two or three, what are you asking?
My budget is only put in two new.
Yeah, he just states in his letter, but ideally, three, he could get by with two, is what he was.
Okay, I got you.
Correct.
You asked for two, okay.
One thing I'll share, just a quick tidbit of information that might paint a little bit on the bigger picture. Hendricks County is another doughnut county. Hendricks County has eighteen full-time deputy prosecuting attorneys and two part-time deputy prosecuting attorneys. I believe I have, counting myself, I think I'm at twenty-one full-time and five part-time. So we are bigger, but when you look at the population, their population as of July of 2017 was one hundred and sixty-three thousand. According to the census figures, estimates, ours was three hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-seven. So in essence, twice, a full, twice the size of that county, and yet, not nearly twice the size of the prosecuting attorneys.
What you're saying is, you want us to take this information, send it over to the Hendricks County Council, so they could cut back.
Yeah.
When our prosecutor does.
Law prosecutor does over here.
You guys are way fat down there.
My preference would be that you look at, yeah, you're doing a really efficient job, because you should have closer to forty, forty, forty-five employees.
He should run for Attorney General.
I have that information alone.
Any other questions for Lee?
No.
Okay. I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, I wanted the council to look at our agenda here. Am I missing something? Is lunch not in the?
It's just not included as a bar on there. There is time for it.
Yeah, it says twelve oh five or one thirty.
Where does it say that?
Right there, it goes from twelve oh five.
It says twelve oh five. You have to go with that.
Oh, there's no box for it.
Correct.
Man, I feel better now.
It's like I'm getting hungry.
Oh, Lord. Amy wants us to work through lunch.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind. Let's roll.
Shane, welcome.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I was running to my wedding.
Unlike the prosecutor, I would like to enter a plea agreement, so.
Uh-oh.
Kiltsey.
You walked into that one.
Did you follow budget guidelines?
No, we did not.
And how long have you been here?
I started in February.
Okay.
Valting.
It's a good idea to follow budget guidelines.
It is.
Yeah.
We, unfortunately, though, we've had some changes that are outside of our control, so that's one of the reasons why we did not follow the budget guidelines.
Yeah. And we've had some stuff that's outside our control, somebody is messing around with our income tax money.
That's not good.
No. Go ahead.
Well, one of the things that we did, that's not, to my knowledge, that's not been done before, is we actually did financial analysis of the past three years, and we looked at what money we've moved around internally, what money we've asked the council to help us move around, and then we've also gone through and looked at what appropriations we have asked for in the past, and we reset the entire budget to ensure that what we were actually doing with the money for the past three years is in line with what it is that we've asked, that we're asking for. That, and also, in addition to that, we've also looked at projecting what some of those growing demands are on the emergency management program, including employment retention strategies and following the budget guidelines for increases for the, for the budget guidelines in itself. And then part of the challenges that we have, that we did, that one of the big reasons that we did not follow the budget guidelines is all the money that we keep accepting from the federal government and all the equipment that we continue to purchase, we are obligated to maintain that. And that's not something that has been put into the budget in the past, is to ensure that the operating supplies are meeting those requirements to maintain our generators and all the other equipment that we have for emergency services. Just in this year's budget breakdown, the total budget was three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The county actually funds only two hundred and forty-eight thousand of that, so thirty percent of our budget is actually funded by the US government, and that money is not matched by the county. So when we look at that hundred and six thousand dollars that came from the federal government, the per capita rate for emergency management is actually eighty cents for our budget. So I just want to make that clear, that only thirty percent of that overall budget is actually funded through the US federal government. Our current proposal, and what we're looking at for next year, is again, taking into account that that bottom number that you're seeing within the budget worksheet, that's not broken out by how much is counted and how much is funded by the federal government. And then in addition to that, one of the things that we did ask for is a planner slash GIS person. We have the County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan that we're required to maintain and to meet those standards, and one of the things that we are not doing right now is we are not planning for recovery. It's easy to have the fire trucks go, it's easy to fill the thousands of sandbags like we did this past weekend, but when we get into a disaster that's federally declared, the recovery aspects can be extremely challenging, and I've worked nineteen presidential disaster declarations. And that's one of the things that we're asking for, is to ensure that not only can we have some of the things that are out there that we can do with GIS, but then also ensuring that we are ready for a recovery mission in the event that we have something on a ice storm. And again, I think when we look at this, emergency management relies your insurance policy. And we all don't want to pay our insurance premiums, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we've got what we need for the county, and I think that eighty cents per capita is a, is a pretty low rate for, for an insurance policy. We also are wanting to account for our program, and one of the things that we've been doing this year that hasn't been done in the past is providing you with a monthly report. I think it's important to show you what we're doing with the money and what the program is, how that is evolving. One of the things that we've not really accounted for in the past is the volunteer contribution. We are using them in ways that we've never done before, and right now, just year-to-date, they have contributed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the county's operating budget by utilizing them in ways that, again, we haven't done before, whether that's doing planning missions, whether it's helping teach classes, respond to flooding events. That's another big piece of what we see. And then unfortunately, we're seeing decreases in our federal grant dollars. And that's another challenge that we have in, in emergency management, is that as we continue to see that loss of things like the U.AZI funding, we are not going to get U.AZI money next year, and we'll probably not get that for the following two years. And that puts a big strain on our budget. And in addition to that, we also have two other grant programs. One was cut in half, and another was cut by a third. So we're really trying to do, be good stewards of our money. We also are not seeing any growth in our Tier Two, despite our Tier Two facilities, which are all the places that actually have bad chemicals that meet a threshold here in the county. Those number of facilities are increasing, but the money that comes from that is still flatlined, so we're not seeing really an increase from the L.A.P.C. side of this either. So we took all those things into consideration, and that's where we came, how we came up with the budget proposal and what we did for this year.
Okay, so you want one new full-time employee.
Which is roughly fifty-six, eight-plus benefits.
Right.
And then you want ten thousand, little over ten K, based on the line items for operating professional services. Is that correct?
If I may please.
Okay.
And I have a question, the U.AZI grant, does that cover personnel?
It typically, in the past, it has, but because of the amount of cuts that we're seeing over time with that, we've not been able to use U.AZI money for personnel because it's not consistent.
Okay, so your grant-funded positions don't correlate with U.AZI?
Those are actually coming out of the Emergency Management Preparedness Grant, or EMPG money.
Okay.
And the federal government will match half the salary for three full-time employees, and that's where that thirty percent of the budget from the federal government is coming from.
So it's not in jeopardy?
That is not in jeopardy, no.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thirty percent of this new salary would be covered by the feds.
No, I'm sorry. Thirty percent of our current budget is covered by the federal government, and what we're asking for in this new position, that would be funded through the county and not through the federal government.
Okay, so if, there's no, okay, got it. Just want to make sure this is clear.
But I also want to make sure that, too, a lot of our grants that we get, the county has to match that grant, but that hundred and six thousand dollars that we're receiving annually from FEMA, we do not have to match that at all. They allow us to use our friends' benefits to match it, so the county's not putting forth anything to match that thirty percent, which is a great benefit for our county, and I ask that you use that in consideration, or take that into consideration, considering, you know, this new, this new position that would really significantly make a difference for emergency management for the county.
Let me ask you a question on the ten K. Federal government, you said, covers thirty percent. Will they take three grand of that ten, and so the county's only actually putting in seven, or we're putting in ten, and the feds are putting in maybe four more?
It's hard to match that, because they're not actually contributing to that ten thousand at all, but what we are doing is that ten thousand is covering the millions of dollars that they've given us in equipment over the past years. So things like the generators, you know, we've got vehicles that are provided by them, there's a lot of dollars, a lot of dollars that have come in that we are just basically maintaining, the millions of dollars that they've provided to us.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Shane. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we move on to the extension office? Morning, Susan.
Hi, Susan.
Come on up.
Good morning.
Well, I think I attached a cover letter with our budget request when we sent that in to just kind of explain. We did stay here with the extension office and stayed within the guidelines for the operation. Did not ask for an increase this year for 2019. And we also asked for the appropriate, the allotted salary increases for our staff, so thank you for those as well. We do have evaluations and everything in place for our staff. And along those lines, I did want to mention, I know your time is short, and I, but a couple of things, and that's with our staff. We have now two positions that, through federal grants, that are part-time, that are able to do and focus on programming, but don't show up in there. So what we do, and we're working on, always looking at ways to improve, you know, and the things that we do with outreach, finding help, and so we appreciate the staff and that, what you're able to give us. So thank you very much. Last year, we had a part-time person added, and that's been an amazing help for us, and to help with some marketing, and so we appreciate that as well.
Question for you, the grants, were they new this year? I mean, the positions new, or is this just reoccurring so far?
They're reoccurring. They're a federal grant that's through Purdue that we just, I have to do complete paperwork on. One is working with low-income, working with our, like Head Start, food pantries and so forth, and educate, direct education on finances and nutritional meal planning and that type of thing, and the other person has been moved into a community wellness coordinator. That position has just been within us last year, and that she was, one position is switched. She was the other position and Purdue switched, so the benefit to us is that we're getting, you know, forty hours at least a week from these two positions with direct education, helping the residents at no cost to the county. So we also had three interns this summer. Part of them were part-time and just kind of focused on projects, but, so anything that we can do in that way to, you know, work and put people in a special project that helps, you know, extend education and, you know, for the residents, we try to do that. So I just wanted to share that, because I know that, you know, the appropriations for the current salary, and as you're looking at that, we're always trying to then take those and, you know, make that, kind of stretch that as well. So I just want to thank you for that, so.
Well, thank you, Susan. I, working with you boys, it's truly a pleasure working with you. I enjoy it, and you make our job really simple here. Thank you very much. I wish everybody did like you did. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will mention one other quick thing, is that's that at some point, you know, over the last sixteen months, not appropriate here, but we hope to come back and visit with you sometime later in the fall about some things that we're working on with the Life Sciences Initiative. We've had a committee working with that. We've had discussions with some of our liaisons and just looking at programming and needs, and so look forward to hopefully having an opportunity to share some of that later date, so.
Also, just real quick, I know, for example, because there was a presentation done at one of the four-H. one of the 4H meetings that I was at, where the shooting, archery, and so forth, that is growing leaps and bounds. And a lot of people have come in and talked about bigger populations and so forth. I'm just assuming that you're also growing with a number of different programs and kids getting involved and everything like that with your facility? Is that true?
Well, yes. I mean, and what some of these special projects have helped us to do, I mean, I think that people come in and they'll say that they've been to the fair, they look around, you know, as if fewer sheep are there, you know, I mean, every year we have those, but it cycles, you know, so maybe this year we have less sheep, but we're hiring something else. So those trends continue. And then the specialty projects, things like shooting sports that focus on safety and all of that, those things are continuing to grow.
Even like electrical, I was amazed, one thing, I think, some people think, oh, 4H, it's three days a year. It's year-round, and there's a lot of things. I just wanted to reiterate real quick. I was really impressed that we have four kids this year at Purdue, freshmen, that came out of our 4H shooting sports that, as freshmen, already have placed as first team on the Purdue varsity sports shooting team, and they're already nationally ranked. So I think it's just great for people in Hampton County.
Hey, Susan, does Master Gardeners fall underneath your purview?
It do.
If you run into somebody that's an expert in wisteria, would you have them call me or give me their number?
Absolutely.
Wisteria.
I got some plants. Something's been eating them.
I think we probably have a publication for you.
Okay.
Susan, the professional services, what does that usually spend on?
What do you mean?
$100,000 in professional services.
Oh, professional services, okay. So there's several things that are included in that line item. One being the security contract for the grounds. So when we pay the security, that comes out of that and goes back.
Like, you mean the electronic monitoring for the building or something, or?
No, it's actually the security contract that we have. So when there's an event there, that's a rental event, over a certain percentage or a certain number of people, we have a security person and have done that for several years.
The sheriff doesn't do that for you for free?
No, no. So, no, that's, so that's a big chunk of that. The other is, there's between $75,000 and $80,000 that the county has a contract with Purdue that pays for three educator salaries. So that is the salary for myself, Kathleen Bodier, 4H youth educator, and then Amanda Baird, who is our Ag and Natural Resources educator. So that's also that contract that we bring forward each year, so. So those are the two big line items that's 90% or more.
Any other questions for Susan? Saying none. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
We have Jennifer Hayden here with the quarters office. Do you want to move ahead?
Counselor? Yeah.
Okay. Jennifer, welcome. Good morning.
16. Doing pretty well.
Adhere to guidelines?
Pretty straightforward here.
Pardon me? Adhere to the guidelines?
Yes, I did.
Awesome.
Any questions for Jennifer?
Pretty straightforward, this one.
I have no questions.
Jennifer, can you give us a quick breakdown on the fees that you charge people who record documents and how those are dispersed? How much do you get? Where does the others go? Can you break that down for us?
Yeah. We have, some of the money goes to County General, Recorder's Perpetuation Fund, Elected Officials Training Fund. Some of that money goes to the state for mortgage education. I didn't bring my reported collection, so I don't know all of those exactly, but the big ones are the perpetuation and the redaction. So the social security numbers that are on the documents get redacted off of them.
And what is it, a dollar per piece of paper?
The recording fee, you mean?
Yeah.
The recording fees went up last year. $25 for every document except mortgages. Okay? The surveyor's fee increased as well. They get $5 now for every document as opposed to just the deeds.
A surveyor does?
Yes.
So I ought to pay for that 95?
Well, I'm just pointing out that Jennifer is a revenue stream.
Yeah. There's quite a bit of money in that Elected Officials Training Fund, too. And I'm the Recorder's Association President this year, and we're having legislation looked at to open up that use. Currently, it's just for elected officials, but we're looking into having deputies and employees at the elected official's discretion use that money, too. Because I think we currently have what?
$275,000.
Yeah, $275,000 in that fund that's, could be used for education. Yeah, thanks. And I don't use it. I use my perpetuation fund, so I leave that for the rest of the county officials that have that need, so we're not having to dip into there, too.
What is the definition of training?
I know for the recorders, at least, there is mandated training that we have to have. We have to have 40 hours within a four-year period. I think each affiliate has a different amount of hours, but they're state-mandated training. So it is put on by either State Board of Accounts, AIC, whatever association that they're working with, put together those training forums for them, and...
I'm doing a rookie job. I didn't know, like, when we have the state called meeting for the council, whether or not we could bill those registrations. We cannot. Don says no.
No, it's, the council's not included in that.
No.
Oh, we're not?
No, but I mean, there's no reason why you guys couldn't have legislation pass so that you could do that. Right now, I think it's what, the treasurer, recorder, surveyor, auditor, clerk?
I don't know.
I think there's five, but I'm not sure of that fifth one. But those are the ones that are able to use it right now because they have state-mandated training.
And they've been told that if it's a state called meeting, then it's to come out of one of the corporations, and not use it as part of the...
Yeah.
So the $275,000, it's got to be used for elected officials only?
Right now, it's only elected officials.
Certain, okay.
Only those few elected officials right now. So we're looking at having legislation open that up, at least for those people, employees that can, that would go.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jennifer. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. The treasurer's here as well. You want to move on to the treasurer?
I mean, I don't see, I mean, why not?
Okay.
Only if she wants to.
There you go.
I don't know if she sat there like she didn't want to.
Welcome, Jennifer.
On whether or not we wanted to talk to you, or, eh, you know. Jury's still out till you get to that mic. Do you adhere?
I adhere to it.
And you're looking for full-time, a new full-time person?
No.
Who's in ASIS? Oh, for the SIS.
They all say that. You'll see it in red. You'll see it in white if there's, because like...
If I ask for something, I did it while I was sleep typing.
Yeah.
Sleep typing, I like that.
But, no. I mean, are you trying to give her? I mean, are you...
I was willing to give her something, but she said no, so, okay.
Actually, if I brought any additional full-time in, we'd be sitting on each other's laps, so there's no room for expansion right now.
No, that brings up a good point, the ones that, and I forgot to ask Lee, he's still here, the ones that are asking, do they physically have place bodies if they were granted? You know, that's an important thing.
Lee, do you have places that you could house your...
Yes, I have a way I can make it work.
You wouldn't be requesting a bump out on the side of the...
Knocked down a wall.
Okay, good, thank you. Have any particular problems, Jennifer?
Yep. And actually, if you'll notice that we did, we had a change in employment, so actually the budget dropped some, so.
Did you ever get that whole, you know, Brad was really, really, really concerned about the change, you know, the giving of change? Did you get off?
You did, you did see the emails.
I saw the email, yes.
Yeah, I emailed you. There's only one bank I still have not gotten an email from, so...
And that's First Merchants, right?
Uh, no, I think it was Key.
B Bank, okay.
But you, I just, no, but if you haven't had the opportunity, Horizon Bank is open now. They want to be very involved with the county, so county employees, even if they don't have an account there, can go over, make changes as long as they have their ID.
That down by the silver dollar?
Yeah, the new bank that just came in. If employees need checks cashed, they'll cash checks, even if they don't have, so they're willing to work with the employees, so.
Sounds like a good bank.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Saying none, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
See you.
Thank you.
I've asked Don to contact the planning department and Soron Water.
The truck will be down in just a couple minutes. Ginger was at another meeting that she left word with her staff if we called.
Who's that?
Ginger with Soron Water.
Okay. Well, I would say now, the wife is the deputy recorder, and so I knew about the elected officials fund, so at a time when I hear that they have had the legislation written to open it up, I'll let you guys know, and we'll lobby our state legislatures that we need a broader interpretation of that elected officials fund. No reason to take it out of County General when there's money sitting, and like she says, $25 per document. You want to record something?
A lot of money.
Yeah, it is.
Smoke them if you got them.
The wife's a smoker.
[laughing]
We're back in business here. We have the planning department. Chuck Kepner, good morning.
Good morning. You all have a copy of our budget. The only change is in the salaries, and we have followed your guidelines as set out.
Chuck, you followed guidelines, you're not asking for full-time employees.
No new employees.
Right. What's your status on your vehicle you're using for inspections now? Do you need one?
Well, probably we will.
Well, I'm just saying...
We put a lot of money in, the ones that we have.
I work with Dan on a replacement of our fleet every year, my vehicles we're buying, and they will probably come up, there will probably be vehicles that are moved out of our frontline fleet, so I was... That's why I'm asking you. What are you using now?
We have two. One's a Blazer that we got from the Highway Department several years ago, and then the truck. Okay, so both of them we have, we have gotten from the Highway Department when they got rid of them.
What's the estimated miles on those, Chuck? Just roughly?
One's got about 75, and the other one have like 89. Not too bad.
More of a thought maybe for next year, like something to keep on the thought process that I...
I'm just saying, when we go to replace them, if they got some better...
Yeah, yeah.
If there's some better out there, that'd be great.
Put your name in the hat.
Okay. Keep it in mind.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions for Chuck?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Good afternoon.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks for coming, Linda.
My guy, she's got all the details.
Now we can take a break. Let's take a 10-minute break according to the clock on the wall up there.
Okay.
Glad to do it. So I have requested a slight variation from the guidelines, only to just increase the cost of doing business of inflation, so inflation costs or operating cost. And then we also see struggles with maintaining our mileage budget. We're pretty responsible with using our county vehicles as much as possible, but with seven staff in one vehicle, oftentimes there is not the ability to use the vehicle because it's already in use. So we are tight on that budget. And there's been several times last year where I just took a hit to my mileage just so that we would stay within bounds.
Brad?
So you followed guidelines other than 500 increase in Fund 2200 and 500 increase in 3100?
Correct.
Other than that, you're within bound guidelines and you're not asking for full-time employees?
Yep, I mean, no more than we already have.
This is straightforward.
Good to see you, Ginger.
Good to see you guys, too.
Question for you, Jennifer. How much do you spend roughly on mileage reimbursement and so forth?
So our current budget is, I believe, $3,000. Yes, $3,000. And last year was $3,000 as well, 2017. And we've gone through that. I mean, I think last year we had $4 left in the budget at the end of... Oh, how much did I eat? Probably $150 or so. Just because when it gets down to that, I just start limiting my outings as much as possible.
Do you feel the $500 request is sufficient?
Should be, yeah. I believe that that will cover it.
I really don't myself care for you to eat your own mileage, so. So make sure you keep track.
I'd rather my staff be reimbursed than myself.
I understand.
I like looking out for them, so. But thank you, I appreciate that, yeah.
You want to ask your question about the weed?
I mean, if you want to extend it.
I did.
Yeah, we'll take.
Okay.
This lady here knows, too.
Do you know about wisteria?
Yes.
I got something eaten by a wisteria plant.
So what we always suggest is if you have, have you seen the insect or...
Seen a few, and the best I can describe it is it looked like a bagworm.
Oh, okay.
But there weren't very many of them.
What I was going to suggest is, for your extension, there is a way that you can send an image to the diagnostic lab. It costs, I think, a minimum of $5, $10. And they will diagnose what the insect is and then treatments for that insect as well.
Oh, you send the leaf?
You can actually just take a picture of the insect. You can.
You mean like you're...
With a phone?
Assuming that I see the insect.
Okay. If you don't see the insect, then yes, you would take a leaf. Actually, if you can do both, if you can send...
Take a picture.
A picture and a leaf with a bit of branch in it, because it may be that it's a fungus or something else, and then so they need some branch. So you can do that. But yeah, if I come across a solution, I'll send it to you, because I can look up to see what's hitting the area. We have a couple master gardeners that are very knowledgeable.
I mean, it did real good early in the summer, and then it bloomed a couple of times. And then later on, it wasn't growing as vigorously.
Sure. I'm hoping it's not the Japanese beetle, though, because the Japanese beetle this year has been, which is invasive bug. It's a bug from Japan. Yes, you would see it. And the leaf would look like lace. So if you see more of a lacy leaf where you can see the veins still.
This was actually like chomping in from the...
Like claws. Yeah, so it might be a tobacco worm or something else, but send me a picture and I'll try and see if I can come up with a solution.
Thank you, Ginger.
All right. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Oh, it's my Noblesville insert.
Hello.
Oh, can you stand up to the podium and introduce yourself?
Sure.
I'm Grace Cochran.
Hi, Grace.
What grade are you in?
Senior.
A senior?
Senior in high school.
Yeah, Noblesville High School.
And you're doing this because this is a field you want to get into, or?
Um, yeah, I'm interested in it, so I wanted to like get some experience, see if I like it.
Think I'm not going to Purdue?
Um, yeah. Yep.
Well, good. Good luck.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. This time, we want to go on and take our lunch a little bit early today. And if we do, we don't need to be back until 1:40.
I would say 1:30.
Yeah, come back 1:30.
That'll work. 1:30 it is.
All right, let's all go to this CarMax and kill some time.